Call the January 12, 2021, Goochlin County Public Schools Meeting to Order. The first item on our agenda this evening is an organizational meeting. And before we go through the process of electing the Chair for the 2021 calendar year, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Wright for his years of service as Chairman of the Goochlin County Public School Board. I've been serving as Superintendent in this community for four and a half years. And Mr. Wright has been either Chairman or Vice Chairman during four of those four and a half years. And it's truly been a pleasure to serve with him in that role and look forward to continuing the great work of our school division as we go through the process of potentially electing a new Chair. And Mr. Wright, just wanted to publicly thank you for your service and for leading our school division forward during probably the most challenging time that our community has faced in recent memory. It's been your leadership, your poise, your confidence, and your reasoned approach that has certainly helped us to be successful during this most difficult time.
Thank you. The pleasure was all mine.
So I'll open the floor for nominations for Chairperson of the Goochlin County Public School Board for the 2021 calendar year.
I nominate Karen Horn.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second for Ms. Horn to serve as Chair. Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of Ms. Karen Horn serving as Chair for the 2021 calendar year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, congratulations, Ms. Horn. The meeting's all yours.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. We are going to continue with our organizational meeting, but before that, I too would like to thank Mr. Wright. I've learned a lot and I'm sure I will continue to learn from you. So I have you on speed dial.
There you go.
But thank you, Board, for the opportunity to serve as the 2021 Chair of the School Board. Children are my joy. School is my happy place. Working to empower families and staff to grow children to be self-sufficient and caring adults is my passion. The challenges we have faced and will face will encourage more creative and engaging solutions from our education team, beginning with our early childhood educators, leading students from the knowledge and skills for their future economic survival to lives well lived. I look forward to collaborating with each Board Member and Dr. Raely as we resolve to do our best for all the citizens of Goochlin County. So thank you. My first order of business will be the election of our Vice Chairman. The Chair will accept nominations for the Vice Chairman of the Goochlin County School for calendar year 2021.
Madam Chair, I move that we elect William Quarles as our Vice Chair.
Aye, second.
Thank you. I have the nomination of Mr. William Quarles for Vice Chairman, and I have a second. Is there any other nomination? Hearing none? I will, let's see, we're going to vote.
All in favor.
All in favor. All in favor of Mr. William Quarles for Vice Chairman. Please answer with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Very glad to hear that you didn't oppose.
And that's an aye for me, too. I was so focused on the question. Thank you. Mr. Quarles, congratulations.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you, and I think we will have some great work to do this year.
Absolutely. And I'd like to say, if you may, Madam Chair, Mr. Wright, it's been a pleasure working with you as always. I know we're going to seek to deal with the properties that we have in the county as we go through the ensuing year, this ensuing year. And that means there are problems, but those problems will become opportunities for us to be successfully achieved. So thank you.
Excellent. All right, our next item is appointment of the Clerk. The Superintendent recommends the appointment of Diane Bennett as Clerk of the Goochlin County School Board for calendar year 2021. Do I have a motion?
Submoved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So all in favor, please answer with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, congratulations, Ms. Bennett. We look forward to continuing to call you and get all the great information from you. Thank you so much for your service. Item number four is approval of the Superintendent's designees. The Superintendent recommends that during his absence or inability, Andrew R. Armstrong, Stephen A. Guyer, and Deborah H. White be approved as designees to attend meetings of the School Board and be authorized to sign reports, requisitions, and other official correspondence for the period January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation?
Submoved.
Second.
Excellent, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And so Dr. Armstrong, Dr. Guyer, and Ms. White are here tonight, so we really appreciate you guys, and thank you so much. Item number five is appointment of Agent and Deputy Agents. The Superintendent recommends that Deborah H. White be appointed as Agent and Stephen A. Guyer and Andrew R. Armstrong be appointed as Deputy Agents, authorized to sign contracts and delegated authority to examine and approve claims for all financial obligations for the School Board for the period of January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2021. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
Madam Chair, I approve the, make a recommendation, approve the recommendations of the Superintendent, of the persons you so named.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Excellent, thank you. So we have now approved the recommendation for the appointment of Agent and Deputy Agents of Deborah H. White, Stephen A. Guyer, and Andrew R. Armstrong. Again, thank you, guys. Item number six on our organizational meeting is approval of the schedule for regular meetings. And this list is in the Agenda items, and you will see that all of the meetings' location this year are Goochlin Administration Building, this very room. Sometimes they are on Monday because of conflicts with the Board of Supervisors. Sometimes they begin at 5:00, 5:30, so we need to pay attention to that, and I'm just happy my car will drive to one spot, so it won't get confused. So for this, Section 22.1-72 of the Code of Virginia states that each School Board shall meet annually in January, at which time the Board shall fix the time for holding regular meetings for the ensuing year. The Superintendent has provided a proposed schedule for Board meetings based on regular business meetings being held on the second Tuesday of each month. I'll entertain a motion to approve our schedule.
Madam Chair, submoved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Great, thank you. So we have now the approval of the schedule for regular meetings as posted in this agenda on January 12. Item number seven is very important and really important to share with the, there's a lot of work being done at all our Governor's Schools, and Maggie Walker is really doing a great job in leading in that. So this is a selection of Representative and Alternate to Maggie Walker Governor's School Board. A School Board Member needs to be selected for the Maggie Walker Governor's School Board for calendar year 2021. I'll entertain a motion for our, our member, our Board Member.
Madam Chair, for continuity, I offer to recommend Mr. John Wright to continue.
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second that Mr. John Wright be, be elected to represent us at Maggie Walker's School Board, Governor's School Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
You're welcome.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
I know you'll do a great job. You have really learned, continued to learn a lot with that school, and you bring so much to them, so thank you.
Thank you.
A School Board Member needs to be selected as an alternate for the Maggie Walker Governor's School Board for calendar year 2021. I'll entertain a motion for this position.
Who has been our alternate? Oh, well then, I would like to nominate Mike Newman to continue as our alternate there. Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to, for us to select Mike Newman as the alternate for Maggie Walker Governor's School Board for calendar year 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, Mr. Newman, thank you very much. We look forward to learning from you as well as Maggie Walker Board continues this year. Item number eight is selection of Representative to the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board. A School Board Member needs to be selected for the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board for calendar year 2021.
Madam Chair, I move that Karen Horn be our Representative for the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board.
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second that Karen Horn serve as the Representative to the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. I will continue to serve on this Board. It's a wonderful opportunity, and I appreciate it. Item number nine is selection of Representative to serve on Facilities and Safety Advisory Committee. Two School Board Members need to be selected to serve on the Facilities and Safety Advisory Committee for calendar year 2021.
Madam Chair, I move that William Quarles and Mike Newman be appointed as Representatives to the Facilities and Safety Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second that Mike Newman and William Quarles serve on the Facilities and Safety Advisory Committee for calendar year 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Mike Newman and William Quarles will continue to serve on Facilities and Safety Advisory Committee for calendar year 2021. At the conclusion of our organizational meeting, we will proceed to the Agenda of its regular business meeting. And during the regular business meeting, we will discuss revising policy BCF and later complete our assignments to Advisory Committees. We will also be working to revise our Code of Ethics, so our, those two items that are typically done at the beginning of our meeting and the organizational meeting will be completed before this evening. Thank you. Now we are to our budget work session, and Dr. Raely.
Thank you, Ms. Horn, for the opportunity to kick off our budget season today. You know, as you know, typically, we have this work session in a true work session format where we roll our sleeves up and we sit around the table and we have conversation and discussion about what we expect to consider in the coming weeks and months as a part of our budget. Unable to do that based on where we are right now with the pandemic, and plus, we have the camera behind us, so it's a little bit different setting, but I still hope that we can have the opportunity to have discussion, that we can ask questions, that we can look at our issues through different lenses. We do have staff who are here, as we have had in the past, and I want to thank them for their work to get us to this point in time in the process. As we will share in a subsequent screen, this work started prior to October and is not going to finish until April. And so the average person may not recognize the amount of time that goes into our budget development process, and you know, ultimately, it's a cyclical process that goes all year but is sped up from October to April of every year. And so we are kind of in the midst of that process right now with decisions that will come down the pike in the coming weeks from you, consideration by the Board of Supervisors, and then ultimate approval about mid-April. So I wanted to walk through some things today as we start that process. And before we start to think about what our initiatives are for the year and the requests that have come from our department heads and our principals, I think it's important we take a moment to pause for a second and recognize truly what this school division has done during the course of the most challenging time in our careers. And so I, as your Superintendent, am extremely proud of what our school division has done during these most difficult times. We are standing tall in the midst of an event that none of us ever predicted. We have adapted. We've modified. We've been flexible. But through it all, we have stayed true to what we believe in, our core values, and our team has risen to the challenge each and every day. They've gotten out of bed. They've driven to school. They've taught students in an environment that none of them have ever been prepared for, and you know what? We're doing an exceptional job of that right now. So it is time for us to celebrate what is happening across our school division. We are teaching students in person. We are one of the few school divisions in this Commonwealth that are doing that, and we're doing it extremely well. And I'm proud of each and every employee who has supported that, our bus drivers, our food service professionals, our nurses, each and every person that has allowed this to take place. This has been a long project in the making, but we are carrying it out with a whole, a great amount of success. And so whether we are in person or whether we are teaching students from a distance, we're providing choice, and we're providing a high-quality, engaging experience for each and every student that is enrolled in our school division. And I'm extremely thankful for the contributions of our employees and grateful for their work. We also need to celebrate that in the midst of a time when folks are facing economic challenges here in our own community, that our food service professionals have served over 40,000 meals since March the 17th. And again, I remind you that schools were closed on March 13th. They deployed four short days later and started serving meals from the curbs of our schools. You will see later tonight in a presentation by Lisa Landrum that in just three and a half hours on December the 18th, our food service professionals served over 10,000 meals over the course of three and a half year hours. True heroes who have sacrificed their well-being so that students and families have healthy meals in their bellies, and for that, I'm extremely grateful. We can't forget that we are the number one Special Education Department in the Commonwealth. Perfect scores on both compliance and achievement measures for several years now, two years in a row with perfect marks, and only one of 20 school divisions in this Commonwealth who have achieved that. And I'm thankful for the leadership of Dr. Jennifer Wagner and all the support professionals who allow this to take place day in and day out, something for us to continue to celebrate. Let us not also forget that we are one of the first divisions, only 15, who have been designated by the Virginia Department of Education as a school division of innovation. So in the midst of everything else that we are experiencing, it's easy to get caught up and forget some of the things that have happened during the last 12 months of our time together, and this is one that we need to continually recognize. And if that were not enough, we have been rated by Niche.com as the number one school division in the Richmond metro area, not just one, not just two, but for three years in a row, the sixth safest school division in Virginia and out of 132 school divisions in overall ranking of 13. So more accolades for our hard-working workforce, the support that our community provides us, and the excellence of the school division. So that sets the stage for who we are, what we have accomplished, and then ultimately, the budget that we develop together in the coming weeks needs to honor where we have been, but also continue our work to move forward so that we are not stagnant, that we continually move, we're relevant in the future, and we're successful with whatever we face in the future. So we've received a lot of input through this process, and I'm going to share some of that input with you this evening. And as you can imagine, everything that Mrs. White and I have received is way too much to share in a one-hour setting and even subsequent meetings that we will have, so we've tried to summarize much of that for you, triage some things, and hit some of the highlights for your consideration. But I will say that each and every budget line in our budget has been scrubbed. We've looked at each and every expenditure. We've analyzed every personnel request, and we've looked at everything that has come forward from the field with a fine-tooth comb. And so we certainly respect the role that we play as fiscal stewards of the community's resources, want to make sure that we are looking at everything that we spend, making sure that we're using it to support our students and accomplish our division's goals. We're looking at ideas for strategic abandonment, and I'll hit some of that again this evening. You've received already so far this year input through a survey from our community. You've got some really good feedback from that, probably the most participation that we've had in recent memory about that. We had a town hall. We had three town halls in the fall of the year, and although they were not as well-attended as they have been in the past, we still had the opportunity to hear from our community about some things in this room. We will have some more work sessions. You'll have a public hearing, and ultimately, an opportunity for you to hear my recommendation on a budget for your consideration, your vote on that, and then opportunities to share that budget with the Board of Supervisors prior to their final approval. So process. And through it all, as we're faced with making difficult decisions, it's important that we keep in mind why we do what we do, and that is serving the youth of this community, that's inspiring them to make a positive impact on their world and maximizing their potential. We need to make sure that every decision that we make is rooted in the students whom we serve, keeping us focused. And our core values are certainly as a part of our DNA and who we are and what we believe in. And now more than ever, we must remain rooted and grounded in excellence, the ability to create, have the courage to make difficult decisions while focusing and prioritizing our students, acting at all times with honor, and we must be optimistic. We know that the situation we're in right now is not the way it is going to be forever, so we must have hope, we must be optimistic, and truly believe that each and every child that walks through our doors can and will succeed while they are with us. Board members, this is the first time that we're going to develop a budget that is aligned with your new strategic plan. And so I have provided an executive summary for you. It hits the highlights of what is in that plan, and I want to thank Matt for his work in creating that executive summary. So as we go through this budget, we need to hold ourselves accountable for every dollar that is in our proposed budget directly aligns with what we have adopted as a part of our strategic plan. As I mentioned before, budget development is cyclical. And so, yes, we're going through the process now. We'll adopt a budget, but we continually evaluate what is in that budget so that we can make changes where we need to, look at initiatives for the future, and allocate our resources accordingly. This is a graphic that comes directly from your strategic financial plan that you will potentially approve this evening. At all times, we're making our decisions in the best interest of students, but we're looking at it through the lens of equity and understanding that equal is not equitable and that we may need to allocate resources differently as a result of some of the unique needs that students, teachers, and schools have throughout our community. Let's talk strategic abandonment for a second. There are times when organizations continue to do things because that's just the way we've always done things around here. I will tell you, in order for us to accomplish the initiatives that have risen to the level of priority in our school division, if we continue to do what we have been doing, and then, oh, by the way, we add more on top of that, we're not going to be able to accomplish the things that are rising to the level of priority. It's important that we really look at our normal operations and see what we can do to repurpose those resources to close the gap between where we are now and the aspirations and goals that we have for our school division. We're going to talk a little bit about strategic abandonment later this evening and highlight some ideas that have come from our leadership, but are also maybe seeking some ideas from you about some ideas that you, that you may have as well. So you spend your money on what is important, and so your financial resources, our financial resources, need to be directly aligned with that strategic plan, our vision, mission, and values. And then we allocate our budget based on our instructional objectives, which are making sure that students experience high levels of growth, engagement, and personalization, that we're looking at our work, our instructional program in a balanced way. We're developing students who are career-ready for whatever they face when they walk out the door as a Goochlin High School Bulldog, and that equity, diversity, and inclusion is a fabric of what we do and is embedded in our decisions. And then we're growing our professionals to be able to accomplish the ongoing mission and objectives of our, of our school division, recognizing that we are a teaching and learning institution, but we can't do what we do without the business operations and the skeletons to support that. It's important that we have an engaged community, that we provide a supportive culture for our students and staff, and that we have amazing people doing the work of our school division day in and out, all the time being safe and looking at opportunities for sustainability. Want to pause here for a second and give you an opportunity to remember where we were about this time last year. As we were developing the FY21 budget, we were excited about the revenue that we were expected to receive and the initiatives that you adopted in February of 2020. We were all very proud of that budget. In that budget, we had salary improvement. We had new positions. We had reconfiguration of salary scales. We had increased pay for substitute teachers. We had a school social worker in that budget. We had a variety of things in that budget. We were proud of what we were able to accomplish. That overall budget at the time was $35.1 million. And then, when things changed in our world, we needed to make changes, and we did. We did that while not negatively impacting the level of service that we were able to provide to our students, a high level of quality that we're able to do in our school division. And let us not forget, from February to May... And let us not forget, from February to May, we reduced our budget by $1.3 million, a significant reduction, if you think about it, over just a few short months, and you have experienced and seen firsthand how we are still able to succeed. And so, as we look forward to what FY22 is going to hold, we need to recognize those cuts that were made and those adjustments that were made in order for us to balance the budget as we think about what we want to add into the future. But just wanted to bring us back to that for a second. So, that's where we've been. The road ahead has some uncertainties in front of us, has some speed bumps along the way, but ultimately, I'm excited about the future and how this budget can allow us to accomplish our goals and objectives as we move forward and provide a financial plan to help this school division continue to be the leader, to continue to be that school division that shines, then you to be that school division that we are all very, very proud of. And so, ultimately, as I talk to principals and department heads, there are a whole lot of wants, but there are a whole lot of needs, too. And so, this, as we develop a budget, is going to be a needs-based approach. I just want to focus on those items that are truly the most important needs of our school division, and even recognizing that all of the needs that we have may not be funded in this first year of our work. That's why we have a strategic financial plan. And so, and we'll talk about tier-one needs and tier-two needs, and there are other tier-three needs that we may not discuss tonight, but there are a multitude of needs that have bubbled to the surface, so this will be focused on the two true needs of our school division. So, pause there for a second. Any questions, concerns before we move on?
Board members? This is great.
All right. So, let's talk about those needs. Let's see what has bubbled to the surface through our work since October, and prioritizing our folks. Programs don't teach kids, teachers teach kids. We are a human business. It is the humans who do our work that make us successful, and regardless of the position and whatever is on their contract, our folks do the work of this school division. And I will tell you, I go into battle with all these folks. I would, the responsibilities of our employees, the dedication, the talent, the sacrifice that our employees have made, makes me extremely thankful to be serving alongside them in this battle that we're raging right now. And they've risen to the challenge, they've overcome adversity, and just extremely proud of what they've been able to do. So, as we identify needs, from my desk as superintendent, a significant priority, if not the priority, is making sure that we maintain a high-quality compensation policy or high-quality compensation program for our employees, we recognize the contributions of our employees, and we provide a competitive salary and benefit package for them. As noted in your compensation policy, it is our goal, our goal to be the overall leader in compensation in the Richmond metro region. We've defined compensation, we know that it's more than just salary, that salary and benefits, it's the work environment we create, it's the technology that we provide, it's the professional development, the tuition assistance, it is everything that we do for our employees. However, we know that salary pays the bills. It puts gas in your gas tank, it puts bread on the table, it allows you to live your life however you choose to live that. And so, a priority is salary improvement for our proficient and exemplary employees. Dr. Armstrong, as you know, provided us with some information back in December where we've analyzed our competitive place amongst regional school divisions, and as we'll see in some subsequent slides, there's way too much red on those slides. And so, how can we get red turned to yellow, yellow turned to green, so that we can gain some ground in the marketplace for our employees? As we discussed last year, we recognize that there are bans within our teacher's salary scale where we are far less competitive than we ever want to be. We also recognize some compression issues that have happened over time, and so, we discussed last year at this time how we could revise that teacher's salary scale to make improvements that would help us in our retention efforts. We have some good news on the health insurance front. We received an email today that looks like we may expect a flat increase, two years in a row, in our health insurance premiums.
Wow.
That's not final at this point in time, but with wellness initiatives and a healthy workforce, it looks like we may be able to hold our costs true for that, which will allow us to be in a very competitive position for health insurance. And any sort of salary improvement that we do as a school division would allow those salary dollars go to the back pockets and the pocketbooks of our employees without being offset by health insurance premiums. So, that's a variable that can be manipulated. Right now, we're going to be optimistic that we're looking at a very minimal increase in our health insurance premiums for next year. And then, a priority, I believe, as we move forward, is a health insurance option for our part-time employees, those men and women who have served over 40,000 meals since March 17th, for those bus drivers that have transported students to and from school wearing face coverings with their windows down when it's 35 degrees out, for the instructional assistants and the part-time PEAids and the part-time employees who have not had access to health insurance, for those employees who have been in our learning labs since August the 24th, interacting with students with a smile on their face and an eagerness to support kids. It's for those employees that we need to provide an option for the health insurance for them because they have been there to support us, and we discussed this last year and feel that that rises to the level of priority as we go through making decisions here in the future. So, teacher salary comparisons, you can see that we are only at the median at step 15. We are below the median in every other pay band in this comparison, and so, that's something for us to remember as we go forward, looking at it a different way here. Dr. Armstrong provided this detail, and we lost a little bit of ground year over year in our competitiveness in comparison to the median. As I shared earlier, we want to move these red boxes to yellow and the yellow boxes to green and find opportunities for us to gain a little bit of ground. And I believe, board members, this is the year we do gain ground. I believe this is the year that with a strong economy here in our community, with the strong fiscal stewardship of our board of supervisors and the support that we have of our community, this can be the year where we can gain some ground and change some of these red boxes to yellow and yellow to green. And our teachers are the vast majority of our workforce with, you know, 230, about half of our workforce are, in fact, our teachers. But we can't forget our paraprofessionals and our classified employees who also do the great work of our school division. Last year, if you remember, we talked about substitute teacher pay as well, and I want to publicly thank those who have served as long-term subs this year, those who have been permanent full-time subs for us. They have really helped us to achieve success in our learning labs and other spaces as we've overcome challenges this year, but we still remain in a deficit position in the competitive market regarding our substitutes and feel that increasing that substitute pay and making some changes that we had advocated for last year will put us in a much better position to help us attract and recruit in the future. So, much of that, board members, is a review. Dr. Armstrong hit that for you in December when we were last together, but wanted to prioritize our people because they are the folks who do the amazing work for our school division. So, I'll transition into social, emotional needs of students and wanted to bring forward what, at this point in time, is a requirement for us as a tier-one need in the governor's budget. His recommendation is that we reduce the staffing ratio for the standards of quality for all school counselors to 325 to 1. That's a division-wide ratio, but if you look at it as a school-wide ratio, we are in compliance at all of our schools with the exception of Randolph where we have over 400 students, so that necessitates a .5 FTE for a school counselor at Randolph. And as we shared last year, in order to meet the social, emotional needs of our students and support our families and our engagement initiatives, a school social worker, a full-time school social worker would allow us to be able to accomplish those strategic objectives, and so, that rises to the level of a tier-one need as it did last year. And then, part of our strategic plan includes engaging students and having 100% participation of our students in something outside of the traditional academic day. And so, this is a grounds-up request. This is a request that has come from our students, supported by their parents and the school administration, where we begin a boys' and girls' lacrosse team at Goochland High School. And the girls have already started to raise funds, they have the startup costs, and I have agreed to pay the cost for a spring girls' lacrosse season here in Goochland for this year, and would want to follow that up next year with the boys' team to allow us to have those options and opportunities for kids. So, let's talk about curriculum and instruction, and these, again, are tiered, and we had other requests beyond this that did not make it into a tier-one or tier-two discussion at this point in time, but I want to focus right now on tier-one. And I want to ask Dr. Guyer to come forward and support me in a conversation about elementary interventionists. As you know, board members, prior to March 13th, we had students that were not performing at the same level of their peers, whether it was access to the English language, or it was lack of opportunities through poverty, or whatever it may be, we had students that were not performing at the same level as their peers. With what has happened since March 13th, those gaps have grown, and there are more students who have been identified as needing additional opportunities to be successful. So, as we recover from this pandemic, from an academic standpoint, we need to capture more time with students. We need to look at how our day is structured, but we also need to look at how we staff our schools to be able to support some of these students who are in need. They need more, and if we continue to do what we have done, those gaps will never close, so we need to accelerate our opportunities. And ultimately, board members, with an investment in these interventionists, it holds me as superintendent and all of our staff accountable for all students reading on grade level by the time they leave second grade. And this is doubling down on our efforts to make sure we can provide additional support to accomplish that goal. So, Dr. Guyer, you want to talk a little bit more about interventionists?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Reilly. And really, I don't have a whole lot to add, certainly happy to answer questions, but as Dr. Reilly said, we have talked as a team about our specific goal to ensure that all of our exiting second-grade students are reading on or above grade level. Coming out of the pandemic, a lot of concerns about gaps that may have existed prior to the pandemic, gaps that are widening since the pandemic, and so, as Dr. Reilly described, we are thinking differently about allocation of time, and then, in this case, thinking differently about allocation of personnel resources. And an example that we've talked about that I think captures it probably in the most simplistic way, in many elementary classrooms, really all of our elementary classrooms, you will often see teachers use a stations approach to instruction. And so, if they've got 20 students in a classroom, they may have seven in one group, seven in another group, and six in another group. And there's one teacher, right? So, the teacher gets the opportunity to have that amazing experience in a small group, which we know is so impactful for students, and then the other two groups are essentially working independently on guided practice. And so, one opportunity with our interventionist is that additional staff member can be pushed into those classrooms so that instead of one-third of that rotation, the child gets to work directly with the teacher, two-thirds of those stations opportunities will get to work with a highly-trained adult. And so, that's one of the methodologies that we will use. There will also be additional opportunities for students to get additional instructional time during the school day with our interventionists. And so, as I described, the people that we will be recruiting for these positions, these are going to be highly-trained, qualified, highly-credentialed staff members. And so, really what we're targeting are retired teachers, professionals who have a background in early childhood education, literacy, teaching, obviously, and we know there are folks out there. We already have some recruiting happening informally for folks that are incredibly qualified, overqualified for some other things that they're doing within our community and other communities, and this would be a part-time position that, again, isn't going to be for everybody. And so, right now, we're kind of conceptualizing it around 20 hours a week, which would be the equivalent of four hours a day to provide that added instructional time for really our earliest learners. So, we're targeting primary-grade students, and we know, in many ways, the pandemic in terms of the impact it's had on teaching and learning, for many kids, is the most significant in those primary years as they're developing those foundational skills. And so, that's our conceptual framework for this program. We've talked about, in-house, about allocation of resources from school to school, but suffice it to say that it will be done equitably based on student enrollment as well as specific student needs. So, that doesn't mean necessarily at each school we'll get the exact same number of interventionists, but it will be allocated equitably to make sure that we're meeting student needs in the best way that we can. So, happy to answer questions, or turn it back over to Dr. Reilly.
Board members, any questions?
Any questions? One question on the previous slide when you were talking about the part-time school counselor. Because that is a part-time position, that could also be filled with a retired, very experienced counselor, correct?
Correct.
And not affect their VRS. So, that would open up the pool because we know there's a shortage of licensed educators, teachers, and all other positions, and so, with a .5, that's good, that brings in a whole different pool for you for that really important position like that. Elementary interventionist, glad to see that extra time, that extra set of ears to listen as a child is reading and to maybe pick up something that the other teacher did not will be very helpful as we bring all of our children into that, let's read on grade level or above. So, thank you. Some really great ideas here that do what it is you want to do, and that is to bring every child to their full potential. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guyer. Very excited about that initiative and our elementary principals. When I shared with them, I was going to present this to you today, you should have seen their eyes light up because they work with these students day in and day out, they know the stories behind these students, and so, they feel strongly that this can be a way for us to help close that gap. And we're going to talk later tonight about how we might be able to fund some of these things. We learned today that we're going to be the beneficiary of $1,49,000 in additional CARES Act funds. It's going to allow us to use some resources over the course of the next two years to be spent by September of 2023, and at this point in time, as we build a budget, this would be a prime candidate for that. You spend the money over the course of the two years, you go hard and heavy into closing those gaps. At the end of the two years, when the money dries up, you may not need these positions anymore. So, feel that this is a prime candidate for the use of those grant funds. Middle school science teacher has been requested over the course of the past couple of years by the Goochland Middle School staff. Right now, we're experiencing some concerns with class sizes in there and having enough room to be able to safely educate our students in science. If you look at the distribution of teachers across the middle school, the science department is one less than other departments, and looking at class size ratios, and again, the safety components associated with that, middle school bubbles to the top. And then, specifically, in our history program, we have students who are getting inclusive support right now by a trained paraprofessional but feel the need to have a trained special education teacher providing inclusive and collaborative support to our students in the history curriculum at the middle school, too. So, two FTEs that have risen to the top as needs in the operational budget for our middle school staff. And then, requests that have happened year over year from the high school is transitioning the part-time positions that we have in art, social studies, and English to full-time positions, and we've been lucky to be able to recruit some part-time positions. We just talked about a part-time position, but at the high school, it makes it a little bit more difficult whenever it's a content specialist, it makes it a little more challenging. So, that is a request coming from the high school that is considered a tier-one request. And then, as we open our first-ever energy academy, we need some additional sections for our staff to be able to accommodate the needs of those students. And so, we're evaluating this behind the scenes. We have a really important conversation as staff this Thursday to look at this in greater detail, but we see a need for some additional sections at our high school to be able to meet the growing needs of the programs that we have there. And if you... Go ahead, Mr. Newman.
Just a quick question. The part-time positions of fine art, English, and social studies to full-time, is that three people or is it more than that?
Three individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And if you remember, board members, last year, we left a position vacant. We didn't cut it, but we left it vacant, and that was the support that we're providing for our gifted learners at the middle school. And this year, we filled that void by providing a stipend to some teachers to provide that level of contact. But ultimately, the vision for this position is that we have a similar model at the middle school we have at our elementary schools. You know, students who are gifted leave the elementary school with that connection and that tie to a teacher. They go to the middle school and then... They go to the middle school and it hasn't been there to the level that we wanted it to be in the past. And so if we have the funds to re, to rehire this position, this would be a primary focus on meeting the gifted needs of students while at the same time, providing career counseling support to all students at the middle school. So it's kind of a unicorn where we're looking for somebody with instructional chops who can teach the, the career counseling aspect of this and also get an add-on gifted endorsement to be able to meet the needs of our gifted students. So it would provide a home for those gifted students while at the same time, supporting our needs from an academic and career plan standpoint. So pretty excited about this. True collaboration between Mrs. Potter and Dr. Fowler to bring this position back and recreate it in a different way with a revised job description. We'd be excited to have this position, but certainly have to look at the resources to make that happen. Another request coming from our staff, and this is more of a tier two request, given the priorities of the other things we talked about, is a reorganization of our coaching team and removing the title of instructional technology coach and just having coaches within our building, and then ultimately adding one coach to our workforce. In the fall of the year, Dr. Guyer and our coaches gave a presentation regarding the work that they're doing. And as we have invested as a school division, we have not invested so much in the one-time professional development, which we have, but we have seen greatest, the greatest success by that job embedded, day-to-day, guide-by-the-side coaching. And it's been extremely well received by even the most reluctant staff to have a teacher there who they trust and know who can support them and, and help them with, with their craft. And so if funds become available in tier two, that would be a priority there. And then rejuvenating our efforts from a work-based learning standpoint, recognizing we want students to get experiences outside of the school, outside of the four walls of our buildings, and it needs coordination to make that happen. And then a secondary request is a middle school social studies teacher. Some other things that have risen to the top for curriculum instruction, we're going to experience an increase in some of our subscription services. It's just inflation unfortunately, but we want to be able to continue those. At this point in time, I'm not recommending that we add any new subscription services. We want to continually evaluate what we have done, what we have, look at usage data and make sure that we're using them effectively. And Matt and Dr. Guyer have spent a lot of time analyzing that and are going to continually analyze that over the course of the next 12 months to see if there are opportunities for strategic abandonment there, but we don't feel like we have enough information to make that happen now. Furniture replacement, continued modernization of our facilities, making sure that we have safe and modern furniture for our students. And then an equity initiative is to make sure that every student in ninth grade has the opportunity to take the PSAT, not just those students in Blue Ridge, but every student has the opportunity to take that PSAT, which will help them in their college profile. In line with our need to help close that gap, is we have to fund summer school opportunities for students. Right now, we're in the process of planning an expanded summer school, whereas in years past, we had four weeks of summer school. It was X amount of hours during the course of the day, but we're looking at expanding that beyond four weeks and extending the day a little bit, be able to meet the needs of students that we've discussed need additional opportunities. That includes our Power Scholars Program that we had initiated last year, as well as our kindergarten readiness program through the United Way. So additional time and effort associated with that, we are, I will be recommending to you that we increase the hourly rate for our instructors for that so that we can attract folks after this year. It may be more difficult for us to attract folks to work in the summer just because of the level of rigor of what our folks have gone through this year, but some funding for that. We do have some instructional needs. Mr. Watson is advocating for a Bobcat for our heavy equipment program, a trailer for our CTE program to move supplies back and forth. And then believe it or not, that greenhouse is going to be six years old in the fall.
Wow.
And so like our own homes, you have to take care of them and you have to replace the plastic. And so we feel that we can hopefully fund some of those things through end of the year turnback fund, but wanted to at least get that on our radar screen, make sure that we meet the needs of, of our CTE program. Okay. So we know in talking to Ms. Holman that she is minus 15 drivers from what is budgeted. And although we continually recruit hard and although I'm going to advocate for health insurance benefits for our bus drivers, it's still going to be a significant challenge to close that gap. We've seen the benefits of staggered start this year. We, it's, I applaud our team for thinking creatively to get it done. That's how we're able to do what we're doing today. We see staggered starts as a part of our school division's operations for the foreseeable future. And we've had discussions about what this may look like as we open school in the fall of the year. And knowing that we don't have to maybe sanitize at the same level in the fall of the year as we're sanitizing now, we feel that we can have a differential of an hour in between the elementary and the secondary runs. And so conceivably, we could have a start day of 7:30 AM for our elementary students and 8:30 AM for our secondary. Or 7:45 and 8:45. But anyway, we're in the ballpark of where we've traditionally been. We're also talking creatively about what we're calling a zero period, or what we're calling a remediation period, where if my secondary's day starts at 8:45, could I get students there at 7:45 and give them a zero period and give them opportunities for additional instruction? So in line with closing the gap, elementary interventionists, all the other things that we've talked about, a staggered start can help us provide additional opportunities for students. And I think that we can lead in being creative with that. As a school division of innovation, we have flexibility, right? The state is going to provide some waivers for us and allow us to try some new things. So we're working with staff at the DOE to see what creative, creative things we can do to maybe modify some of the hour standards and be creative with our scheduling in the future. So more to come on that, but we do see staggered starts being a part of our, of our work in the fall. Allows us to reduce our personnel costs a little bit, but increase our personnel costs because we're going to have more six-hour drivers. And six-hour drivers will get full-time health insurance benefits, so there would be an increased cost associated with this, but it would not be the same level of increase if we maintain our workforce as is. Got to continue to take care of our facilities. And as we've discussed in the past, the work of our school division going forward, it's important that we effectively communicate. It's directly in line with our strategic plan. We communicate very well, in my opinion, by committee. Matt does a lot of great work for us from a graphic arts standpoint. Dr. Guyer, Dr. Armstrong, and myself, we communicate through committee. But as we go forward in preparation for a potential bond issue in the fall of the year, a consistent message and the great work of our school division certainly could benefit us going forward. And then this is an exciting initiative. It's an employee-friendly initiative and recognizes minor things that we can do to, to support our staff, is that every 10 years, you go through a recertification. It can cost, what, Dr. Armstrong, a hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars.
How much is it?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars. We could pick up the cost of that recertification. It's a hundred dollar savings to our employees, a little thing, but it gives us maybe competitive edge on some other school divisions that may not do that. Another exciting idea that we had, and we may or may not be able to support this, is providing an additional $250 per employee or per teacher for the supplies that they purchase out of their own pocket. Yes, the federal government allows them to claim it on their taxes, but what if we said, we recognize everything that you, you do and we're going to provide, you know, $250 for you in addition to what your principal provides for you to purchase supplies for your classroom, recognizing the out-of-pocket costs. Don't know if we're going to be able to fund that in this year, but at least wanted to start to think about that conceptually. And then Dr. Armstrong had another amazing idea. After observing some things that were happening in our schools, we have employees who are purchasing lunches through our food service program. What if we provided a voucher for our employees to purchase X amount of dollars of food through our food service program? It shows unity. It provides support for our food service program, and it saves you half of the pack of lunch here or there. Many organizations provide this for other employees. We're not Google, we're not Apple, but if we could provide a minor employee-friendly benefit to folks and provide a voucher for some meals throughout the course of the year, might be a nice little benefit. Don't know whether or not we can fund it or not, but it's something that we've been discussing behind the scenes.
I would think that would also help with some of our cafeteria supervision.
Yeah.
More people in there eating, means more eyes.
Yeah.
Students see their teacher going through the line, hey, it's cool to eat lunch. If, you know, so it, I think it can just overall help, help the program. You know that at the end of the year, sometimes we need to provide some financial support to our food service program, just because of the ins and outs of their budget. We do that anyway. We take operational dollars and transfer it into food service. This might be a way to do that and accomplish that initiative. And then ultimately, providing support for Mr. Steely and his program, that we have some highly trained professionals who have a high level of skills. And we have some of these folks who are going around and repairing signs and doing low-level maintenance tasks. Folks with high-level HVAC credentials are doing low-level tasks. And this could be an opportunity for us to hire a recent graduate or provide a career ladder for somebody coming right out of technical trade school to, to grow their skills and abilities. Low-level employee on the pay scale, but could provide some additional support for Mr. Steely. Tier two request.
One question on the licensure fees. Thank you for that. We do have employees that have multiple licenses. Our CTE folks have occupational or health licenses. Would that be something that could be considered as well, support? Because they have to maintain that license as part of their teacher license.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we, we certainly can modify that to be as, you know, to be as global and general as we want to. The concept behind it is supporting our employees who have a need to keep their license current, and we can expand that beyond traditional teachers. We could do it for our HVAC technicians. We could do it for our SHRM professionals. We could do it for our finance professionals potentially as well.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so strategic abandonment. What are we doing now that maybe is not getting the results that we want and we can leverage these resources to accomplish that long list of things that I just shared with you? Right now, we use a diagnostic resource called Performance Matters. And it used to be interactive achievement back in the day. Basically what this is, it's a way that teachers can do some test prep for their kids. It can be, I give it in the fall of the year in a pre-test, I do a winter, and I do a post-test, and how much do kids grow? It's old-fashioned, traditional, multiple choice. There's a role for multiple choice in our school division as we look at a balanced instructional program, but Performance Matters is not the most employee-friendly. It's not easy to navigate. It's quirky. It's just not fun to, to work with. And so we spend $30,000 a year on Performance Matters. We believe that there are other options out there, either using our current Schoology platform or using potentially another vendor to do this. We've been working with our teachers to get feedback from them. We don't have this recommendation fine-tuned just yet. We need to hear some more input and feedback from, from the field, but that may be an opportunity for us to be able to make some cuts to what we're currently doing and using those resources for something else. We spent some time today with Matt looking at options and alternatives for distance learning. Right now, you know that we use Edge Annuity as our platform to allow students to do some credit recovery, take a German class, take some other classes that maybe are not offered within our school division. We are looking at Virtual Virginia pretty closely, which we, believe it or not, get free slots. We get some free slots for Virtual Virginia, so we could leverage that resource. We're also looking at rather than buying a subscription service where we can have our students take any class from German to American Sign Language to Economics and Personal Finance, that we look at the courses that students really are taking over the course of the last three or four years. And rather than buying a generalized program, we buy only those courses that are most used the most frequently. And so Matt is conducting that analysis for us and also looking at the teacher of record and how we have been paying that teacher of record and seeing if there's opportunities for refinement there. So we think that we can leverage some savings in that Edge Annuity platform as we fine-tune that recommendation in the coming weeks for you. And then we're looking at other instructional resources that we've been using just because we've always had them. And is usage data supporting that? Or is this just something that's used in this classroom? It's not used across the grade level or not used across the school division? And so as we look at our work from a school division standpoint, are there opportunities to maybe abandon this, do something more general from the school division standpoint and, and save some dollars here or there? So again, we're, we're undergoing that analysis right now. We still have a lot of work to do with our energy efficiency. I still go into classrooms and lights are on. And so I still think there's an opportunity for us to do a better job in energy conservation. And I'm hopeful as we come out of this pandemic that Mr. Steely and our principals and collectively we can work towards being a better steward of the environment, turning off lights and saving a few dollars here or there. So thermostat set points, all those kinds of things that we just, we just haven't gotten to right now. Now that we have better control of our building automation system, I think that we can make some of those decisions and save some money. And then another conversation, board members, this is where I really need to hear from you, is the future of our live stream video. We have had this conversation in the past with past boards. We have worked through a variety of different mechanisms since July together, where we started off with Facebook Live and Matt was holding a camera in the auditorium. And now we are in this wonderful environment where the county has really invested in some great audio and visual resources. And so I hope that for the user, they're having a much better experience now with new microphones and, and the lighting than they've ever had, but that comes with a cost. And the county right now is looking at a subscription service that would cost our school developers. And what that does is that includes having the ability as an end user to click on a segment of video in the agenda and going directly to that portion of the meeting. A transcription service where everything that is said, every word, is transcribed verbatim and you go directly to that item on the agenda, you get the video, you get the transcription. And then there's closed captioning that we are, are supporting. The county is looking at that as well, but bottom line, board members, is it comes at a cost of $23,000. And so the question is, is that something that we absorb in our budget? Or is that a conversation that we have with the county and ask if they would potentially support that for us like they do the Economic Development Authority and the Planning Commission? And just wanted to pause for a second and get your thoughts on how we may approach that going forward and how that fits within our, our budget in the coming weeks.
So first, if I may, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
The question I have is trying to distinguish, at least in my mind, the difference between transcription and closed captioning and whether those things are currently being done at the county level. I mean, you, you mentioned closed captioning would, seems like it would be an extra, but are they doing, are they doing either of those two services currently?
Not currently, but they are expecting to in the future. They will be talking to their board with a recommendation to make that happen on their side soon, even I think at the February meeting potentially.
So with this meeting tonight, we have better audio and better visual, but no change in transcription or closed captioning at this time?
Right, that's correct. So what we are doing right now is just a stream. If you want to find the certain portion of the meeting, you gotta move that little dial to the side until you find the portion of the meeting that you want. We are closed captioning this meeting and, you know, that is paid at an hourly rate. Certainly the length of the meetings dictate how much we pay for, for each one of those meetings, but that is something that we are required to do from an accessibility standpoint for the individuals with, with hearing impairments.
Question, does the county then pay for that à la carte in the sense that each one of those entities have to pay into that? Or are they looking at it from, from a budget standpoint of them purchasing that as a group for all of us?
Yeah, it's my understanding that when the county talks about their costs, they're talking about county government costs, Economic Development Authority, and the Planning Commission. They have said this would be the school's share of that. And so conversation is if we are all under one county government, if we are a subset of county government, could we be included in that like the Economic Development Authority and Planning Commission? It's a conversation to think about.
Of the boards you just named, and I've seen some of them meeting in here other than supervisors or school board, is there a cost broken down for each one like the $23,000, which I assume is just school board cost?
The correspondence I've received from county government does not break out those other entities. It breaks out county government and schools. And, and you know, transparency, this may be something that we fund through our CARES Act funding as a result of this being a COVID-related expense. You know, it's, it's, it speaks to transparency. It's linked with, you know, our goals and objectives about enhanced communication with the community, but it does come at a cost. And I just wanted to be transparent with you about what that, what you mean.
Absolutely. And I agree that the transparency is very important. The virtual experience can be daunting and exhausting, and that could turn people away from being a part of our public business. So we certainly don't want to discourage people because of the poor product that they're getting and the inability to hear what is happening in their community. But also, we But also, we get all our funding from the county. That was not part of our budget this year. We can't raise funds to bring in that $23,000. I would hope that the county would take that into consideration as this is a county administration building. The people that use this space are doing so for county business. And it would be really wonderful that it not be an itemized expense for us when this was not in our budget. And yes, it's a great product, and yes, we want to participate, but can we participate as we are part of the county government? Be nice.
Interesting. I just wanted to benchmark wise, how many other organizations or counties, how do they do theirs? Because I'm sure they're under the same type of scrutiny as far as having a product and everyone using that product.
Yeah, I know that the product that the county is looking at is currently used by Henrico County. I know that for a fact. And I don't know their financial structure and how they manage that. But I think it's commonplace to have videos streamed the way they are in public meetings at this point in time. But, you know, there is a cost associated with this and just wanted to be transparent with you about that.
Haven't you heard of me?
Absolutely.
The only thing I can see as a distinction between us as a component part of the county versus the EDA and the Planning Commission is that there is some sort of outside funding that comes to and through schools. Although, we all know it's not sufficient to begin with. I mean, that's the only distinction that I kind of see in my head of us versus a planning commission, for instance, or the EDA, whereas there's not necessarily outside funding that comes there. That doesn't change anything. It's just trying to understand the thoughts of the county.
Does Henrico charge their schools for the program?
I'm not sure, Ms. Barefoot Reed. I don't know.
Could we find that out?
We'll see if we can do some digging on that, do a little research, Miss Ma'am.
That's a good question.
So we don't have to make this decision today, certainly, but I at least wanted to, as we talk about costs and the use of our resources, is this something that we want to continue? And I just wanted to at least get that on your radar screen for conversation. So, some expenditures. We went over where we were last year at this point in time, what happened between February and May, tier one, tier two requests. And so, let's look at some budget variables that may impact how we are able to accomplish some of these initiatives. And we still have to fine tune this. This is based off of our best information today. Governor's budget is where our state revenue is looking. And so, what we're doing is we're comparing where we were February of 2020 to our projections now, and then where we were in May of 2020 to our projections now. So essentially, our estimated revenue today, if you compare to where we were in the initial budget of February 2020, we're looking at $12,000 new dollars overall from what you approved in February of 2020. If you look at our estimated revenue today versus where we were in the approved budget of May 2020, it's $1.5 million. But remember that we cut $1.3 million. So although we're thankful for the additional revenue that we're forecasting right now, it's not as much revenue as we might think as a result of the reductions that were made from February to May of last year. And so, essentially, from a financial standpoint, we're at status quo from a revenue standpoint where we were. We have a lot to be thankful for because there will be school divisions that will be operating at a deficit even over the course of that past year. But we, it's not as much additional revenue as we might anticipate. You can see a significant factor in that is our forecasted state sales tax right now. And still, there are economic variables that may impact that, but we have traditionally budgeted conservatively when it comes to state sales tax. Some estimated costs at this point in time, just to get this out for initial conversation, is looking at a 3% across-the-board salary increase, some of those salary scale changes, some of the personnel changes that we have made just throughout the course of this year with some personnel decisions. We're looking at an increase in all of our funds. This includes our title budgets and our textbook budgets and operational budgets and food service budgets of $1,178. If you look at just that operational budget, some of these personnel expenditures are $1.1 million. So the vast majority of our budget has been and will continue to be the salary and benefits of our employees, especially with the initiatives that we've discussed today regarding health insurance and salary scale improvement. And then with any remaining revenue, we might be able to pick up some of those tier one needs that we've discussed here today. So we're still in the process of balancing this. We are closer today to balancing the budget than we were yesterday, than we were two weeks ago. But ultimately, on the 26th of January, I will present you with the balanced budget for my recommendation and ultimately your consideration. So CARES Act funding, we have spent a little over $2 million in CARES Act funding from us and from the county. And that was all spent prior to the 30th of December. And board members, we made great use of that with rejuvenating HVAC systems, increased filtration, PPE, overtime, homework hotline, you name it. We've done a lot of great things to be able to stretch those dollars very, very far. We are expecting over $1 million in new CARES Act money. They're calling it ESER II is what they're calling it with similar requirements to the first CARES Act bill. Fortunately, we have through 9/30 of 23 to spend these funds. And as we go forward, if we use these funds for expenditures, we need to make sure we're using them wisely because once those dollars dry up, we become used to using those funds for that purpose. And so, we want to be purposeful if we use them, that when they dry up, we're okay or we have a plan for not using them in the future. And so, that needs to be a part of our conversations. And Mrs. White and I have been discussing that a lot. So as we think about the future, board members, we need to prioritize because ultimately, everything that we've discussed this evening, we're not going to be able to put any balanced budget given our projected revenue right now. And so, I just wanted to open it up for conversation about what your thoughts may be, questions that you may have of us, that we can bring back some additional information for you next week, or what you potentially see as priorities heading into our budget development process.
Chair, thank you. So I had a couple of questions just as you were going through some of your tier one, tier two type of needs. So the first one that kind of struck me was ninth grade PSAT for everybody. I understand sort of the motivation behind that. Do we have any rough idea what the cost of that would be for us? And probably more relevant for us right now, I'm sure you're going to get back to me with that figure or us to, with that figure, is the relevance of a PSAT when many colleges are now pulling away from the need for SATs in general?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, you know, what everybody's feedback is there, but I suspect that we've taken the time to have our counselors or whoever reach out to admissions offices and that sort of thing. How many schools are actually looking for them? Obviously, this year is one in which many people don't have scores because of the difficulties of testing and things like that. And so, many universities have moved away altogether from that, even if only temporarily. So, you know, that's just the first thing in my mind is, is that really going to be, what's the cost there? And is that really going to be something that will have an effect moving forward? I know for my senior who's got all of her applications have been done for some time now, she did not submit one single score. And her scores were nothing to be embarrassed of, but she still did not do that. And I think amongst her peers, one of which used to be our student school board representative, that is very common.
Yeah, you're exactly right, Mr. White. Many schools right now are moving towards a test optional approach on the SAT. And I tend to think after the pandemic, that might just be the norm. Mrs. White, do you have the estimated cost on that?
I think it's only $3,000.
Oh, well, leave it to me to grandstand over something that's probably relatively insignificant overall. But still, just, it was a thought. You asked for thoughts, I gave it.
Sure, yes, sir.
The next is a question about the idea of having someone in personnel that handles public relations and communications. Is that a full-time or a part-time position that we're looking at?
Yeah, we were looking at a part-time position, contractual basis, X amount of hours per week, kind of like one retainer if need be for any sort of special project or any sort of correspondence, you know, looking over our shoulder on what we're writing, make sure it has the right tone and voice. So it'd be part-time.
So if that's a part-time person, if it's not contractual, then they would theoretically also be eligible for some form of benefit if we were to do that, you know, for part-time employees as a whole, right?
Yeah, one of the concepts we have explored is them not being our employee but being a purchase service potentially.
Right, well, that would certainly save on the benefit side, so that's great. Last question, I promise. So I know that you mentioned potentially taking care of recertification costs for people. Is there a thought that we would have some sort of tie associated with that? You know, if we pay to recert, you have to stay here for two years, or you repay, or is that not something that we're thinking? I mean, $100 on the surface for one person is not a lot of money in my mind. I just don't have a feel for how many of these come up per year, whether this is something that we could pay for and then someone takes to another division. You know, I don't know whether that's a relevant thing or not, but just something I question.
Yeah, no, it's certainly something worthy of consideration. We haven't discussed any sort of commitment to the school division if you receive this benefit, but certainly something for us to think about. Dr. Armstrong, you know approximately how many we work through on a yearly basis? We'll get that for you.
Do the schools, do the schools still pay for the coursework that they take to be recertified?
Some, but not all. We provide two different tuition reimbursement programs. One is, I believe it's $400 or $500 every five years, I believe. Is that right, Diane? And then the other one is up to $5,250 depending on the program, depending on strategic need and a variety of different things. So we have two different reimbursement programs that we.
Are there loyalty years attached to that?
The $500 one, there is no loyalty years. The other one, there are loyalty years, yes.
Well, that may be, that may set a bit of a precedence there about this recert cost and the commitment. If we're not doing it for a $500 cost, why would we do it for a $100 cost?
Madam Chair, one of the things going forward and all like that, I know that it's probably still going to be a component of our educational basis with being virtual. Verizon, Comcast, and those carriers are increasing the amount that they're paying and reducing the amount of bar rate, right? So therefore, people out in the community, will they be able to capture the virtual courses that we have? What can we, will we be getting with the board of supervisors and impressing upon them that the need is now for to ensure better broadband availability in our communities?
Yeah, Mr. Quarles, you couldn't have teed that up better for me, and I'm glad you brought that forward. It was supposed to be part of this presentation, but I forgot to put it in there. So you know that we've distributed, what, Mr. Martin, 500 or 600 KJ, 600 KJ devices this year? And with that, you have the initial cost of the KJ device and you have the ongoing subscription cost. And, Miss White, we spent several hundred thousand dollars on KJ's this year, right? We spent a lot of money on KJ's this year. There's only $20,000 in the budget. We've paid for all those KJ's with county CARES Act money and school division CARES Act money. So now that folks have gotten used to having those KJ devices, do we continue to distribute those KJ devices? Or do we go back to based on need and based on poverty? We've opened up the opportunities broadly, and basically, if you want one, you get one right now. So what happens when CARES Act funds dry up and we go back to a budget of $20,000? Either we have to increase our budget, or we use CARES Act II money for it, or we get an additional appropriation for it. That is a critical decision point. Right now, staff's consideration is we would use CARES Act II money to do that, to continue that. But a million dollars, by the time we provide KJ's and interventionists, and that's going to go quick. But that's a conversation long term, Mr. Quarles, is we've been providing that resource now, will people come to expect that resource from the school division?
Are we, is this twice as many, three times as many as we normally would do? Five times as many?
Wow.
Oh, wow.
And we haven't asked for any sort of financial commitment. It's been, you want it, you got it. I was leaving the office to come here. We had another family that was getting one today.
Okay.
Dr. Ray, I'm sorry. Did the licensure process is for your proximity? You serve some side with that.
Thank you.
That's awesome, and thank her.
I had a question about the PSAT as well. Looking at that article that we read today about colleges being test-blind on that. But I also think that right now, still, even though colleges aren't taking it, there's still that mindset of can I, it's like, can I do well on that? And it's still, it's very much tied to, am I really a college-ready person? I think as long as that's part of the mindset, that still makes PSATs kind of important for our youth when they're considering their post-secondary options. So it's going to take a couple more years probably to get that mindset changed. But, and we do understand why the colleges are not doing that. Question on the middle school science teacher. So science is, has a lot of extra resources involved. So is this a new, absolutely new FTE? And then we would also have to provide possibly lab equipment, certainly lab tables? Do we have another classroom for middle school science? What would be other costs associated with that position?
Yeah, Mrs. Potter has a plan to redistribute her workforce in the building space that's available there. It would necessitate moving some spaces here or there. We'd have to provide some startup costs to that teacher to get them the equipment that they need. We'd have to take an inventory of what we have and then fill in the void there. But yes, there would be, you know, some additional startup costs associated with that.
That would not deter me from not wanting a middle school science teacher. I just feel like it's not just the personnel cost there. There are additional costs there.
Yes, ma'am.
And how does that fit in tier one's revenue?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you. Mr. Newman?
Nothing at the moment.
Okay. Excellent. Lot to think about, sir.
It is, it is. And, you know, we have a budget work session next week. We can maybe bring back some additional revenue figures for you, give you a clear picture that this is really high level today. We can maybe provide a sample of a proposed teacher salary scale for next year. And then in the meantime, board members, if you have some other things you would like for us to research, happy to bring those questions, the answers to those questions to you next week. As we, you know, we're 50,000 feet now. We'll start to narrow this thing down over the course of the next several weeks before you vote.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Blessings, I can see. Thank you. So that ends our organizational meeting and business work session for the evening. It was very, it was great that as a board, we were all able to support the elections and the recommendations for the various committees and positions. So it just shows our collaboration, so wonderful. We will now transition to our closed meeting. Mr. Quarles, will you please lead us into this meeting with a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the Goochlin County School Board convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of employees of Goochlin County Public Schools under Virginia Code. of Goochlin County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711 Alpha 1.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. We are now ready for closed meeting.
Good evening, everyone. The Goochlin County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Goochlin County School Board. Each board member responds "I so certify" when called. Ms. Bennett?
Mr. Hyneman?
I so certify.
Mrs. Horn?
I so certify.
Mr. Wright?
I so certify.
Mr. Corral?
I so certify.
Mrs. Gertner, please.
I so certify.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett, please note that all board members are present this evening. We welcome those citizens present in person and virtually. A special thank you to those present who have worked a full day caring for our school division. We're also excited to welcome our student representative for 2021, Mr. Hatchett Teague. Welcome, sir. You represent the critically important student voice. We will now have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please stand with us if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. See, our agenda is up. Everyone can see that. Thank you. And, Mr. Teague, for your information, the agenda becomes available to the public on Thursday afternoon, generally about four o'clock, and the public sees it when we see it. So that gives you an idea of what we'll be talking about, so that if some students come to you and you go, "Hey, we're going to be talking about that," that's something that's good for you to be ready for.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board members, are there any additions or amendments to our agenda?
No.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Madam Chair, so moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The agenda for January 12th, 2021 is now approved. Mr. Wright, what do we know?
Now we know what we're doing.
There we go. I had to hear that again. Thank you. The next item on our agenda are announcements and reminders. Dr. Rayly?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Horn. And for the members of our public, we have several things that are happening in our school division across the course of the next several weeks. Most notably, on Monday, we're going to recognize the contributions and the sacrifices of Dr. Martin Luther King as we will close all schools and all of our offices to remember him. Our budget work continues on the 19th of January with recognition of our principals the week of January the 24th. I'll come back on the 26th and present my recommended budget to you for your consideration in this room. Some recognitions of the board and our clerk during the month of February with more budget workshops, and then ultimately, your approval of the budget on February the 22nd. So this is budget season. We're hot and heavy in developing that financial plan that's going to allow us to continue our journey toward excellence.
Thank you, Dr. Rayly. We are now in opening our public comment period. As we prepare for the public comment portion of our meeting, the school board welcomes the perspectives of our community. We value your voice as we work to fulfill our mission to maximize the potential of all learners. As we open public comment tonight, we ask that you... As we open public comment tonight, we ask that you support our board's goal in our strategic plan that focuses on our desire to create an engaging and responsive experience where everyone feels informed, included, valued, and empowered. As parents, students, employees, and community leaders, we are all setting an example of how discourse that is respectful and values multiple perspectives is the expectation in Goochlin County and in our schools. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. All voices will be heard, even the voices for tonight's public comment that we may have received via email or video. To foster an inclusive and non-threatening environment this evening, I ask that you do not applaud or make any comment at the conclusion of these remarks. Let's model excellence for our community through our actions this evening. Are there any citizens who are here this evening who wish to come forward for a public comment to the board? Seeing no motion. Ms. Bennett, do you have some emails or any other correspondence that the public has asked to be shared this evening?
I have one.
Okay, thank you.
This email is from Laurel Stratiya. Dear Dr. Rayly and school board members, I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you. On December 16, about 1:00 a.m., a tree fell on our house causing damage to our roof and two of the girls' bedrooms. I reached out to the staff and teachers at our schools and received wonderful support and accommodations. I'm so grateful that my girls were not hurt. Since returning to in-person school, they are both much happier being in class. Kieran, a seventh grader, said on the first day, "I can focus now." At dinner, they're sharing stories about what happens in class and who they saw. I just wanted to share how much we appreciate all that you've done and what a huge difference it has made for our girls. It's so nice to see them enjoy school again. Marina, my 11th grader, has been able to develop relationships with her teachers and commented this school year would have been so much fun if it weren't for COVID. She feels more comfortable asking questions and has been able to receive help on some difficult assignments and thrives in a more interactive and social environment. Virtual school has been great for some students, but not for mine. I also want to thank you for being a leader in our area and continuing with the sports programs at Goochlin. As our youth have made many sacrifices, athletics and school programs provide a necessary outlet for so many kids. Unfortunately, as a social worker and a parent, I have seen the devastating impact that social isolation, mental health issues, and drug use can cause. It is important that we continue to provide opportunities for children who need school and all that it has to offer. This year, I have felt like I am fighting a long battle for my kids and my patients. I'm tired and some days are a struggle. Some days, it feels like I'm just trying to go on every day, go one day at a time, as I'm sure many of you feel the same. I feel that I don't speak up and things won't change, and we may only get the minimum. My mom, a retired teacher, expected the most of us, so just passing was never an option for us, nor was the option to just be satisfied with the status quo. For over 20 years, I've worked as a social worker with those struggling with opioid addiction and mental health issues. I hope you have been able to make a difference, I hope I have been able to make a difference as you do in all the lives of our children. Just like we asked back in the fall for you to reopen our schools, you came through and made it happen. So many kids are now benefiting from all your hard work that made it possible. I have one more request, which I have debated, but the social worker and mom and me must ask. I appreciate having cameras installed to livestream games, but feel that we can do a little better. I do not have a basketball player, but some of my friends are heartbroken in not being able to watch their children. I will hopefully soon have a volleyball player, and I'm depressed to think that I may not be there in person to capture pictures or clap for her from the stands. I understand that for now, there is a limit to spectators, but are we... Oh, lost my place, sorry. But are we at this number? I was disappointed that VHSL chose to list cheerleaders as spectators. If possible, please allow some parents to be able to attend a game or two. As parents, we have made many sacrifices this year and want to be there to support our kids. As some aren't present tonight and some watch from home, we ask the same for our athletic games. In my home state of Iowa, players receive tickets based on space available. Perhaps if you could allow a night dedicated to seniors, one to juniors, et cetera, each parent could at least watch their child in person once or twice this season. It's been a difficult year in so many ways. Our facilities are large enough to accommodate spectators while social distancing, so if you're not at the maximum of 25, please allow some spectators. Our children and families are counting on you to continue to provide the best year possible. As we work to maximize the potential of every learner, we need to continue to maximize our resources and do as much as we can for all our children and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Is there anyone else? Anyone? Mr. Karakajia? Anybody? Okay, thank you very much. All right. That closes our public comment period. We are now to our consent items. Board, what is your pleasure for the consent item?
Madam Chair, I move that we take the consent agenda as a slate.
A second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent items as a slate. Is there any discussion or questions?
No, ma'am.
All right. That being said, we will now vote to approve these consent items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The consent items are approved. Dr. Rayly, some superintendent comments, please, sir.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the work of our school division. This has been a standing portion of our agenda since August, I believe, and so what I wanted to do is highlight some of the metrics of the data from our school division and provide you with just an update on where we are at this point in time across the school division. So as you know, we've been looking at a variety of data points throughout the last several months, but we have focused specifically on our staffing data and health data. And I bring us back to what the board approved on October the 13th. This is critical that we come back to this because this is what we have decided would impact any sort of change in our operational schedule. There's a variety of data on the websites across this nation and across this state. The Virginia Department of Health has been very transparent in a variety of things. Lot of information out there. Percent positivity, cases per 100,000, beds that are available, there's a lot of stuff out there. But on October the 13th, the school board approved this as our, what would impact what we do from a school division operation standpoint. We looked at outbreak. We said if we have an outbreak at any one of our schools, it may impact the operation of that school, not the school division, but it may impact the operation of that school. We also recognized how important staffing was for us to carry out our mission, and I want to talk a little bit more about that in greater detail today, and we've been through some conversations about staffing. I will tell you that I'm extremely proud of our staff and how our team has pulled together in situations that the public may not know about, where at one point in time, we had our entire transportation staff who was working remotely, and we had lateral support from school divisions around the region if we were to have a breakdown on the road during that time. We pulled together, we got students to and from school during that time, and there was not any interruption in service. We had a situation where our food service staff at one of our elementary schools was quarantined, the entire food service team. We had folks who pulled together and made sure that students received healthy meals during the course of that two-week period. There are other situations where we've had principals teaching classes. We've had the superintendent who served as a principal designate one day. We have pulled together to make sure that we're providing our students the opportunities to be in school. But we must recognize that staffing has a tremendous impact on us. We were stretched thin, we're a small organization to begin with, and when we pull together, it has an impact on other things. But we have been able to maintain the level of service to our students and to our families with the staffing that we're providing, but it is an important variable that we must keep an eye on now and in the future. And then knowing that we're living in a once-100-year pandemic, there may be things that we just don't know about that may have an impact on us right now. But I wanted to bring us back to this because this is several months since we've looked at this, and we may get questions about what are we looking at? How are you going to make decisions? And right now, unless the board chooses to go a different direction, these are the variables that we're looking at. So let's look at health data, and this is no surprise that case counts across this community have risen, and it has risen since the 14th of July. This, again, is accessible on the Virginia Department of Health website. We contrasted that against the cases that have happened in the correctional facilities in our community. This is not a new data source here. And then we have looked at the number of new cases per day, and the most recent cases was on January the 4th. We have cases today that our team is working through. We have had daily cases in our school division, but it has not impacted our ability to operate. One of the things I think it's important for our community to know is that we provide communication whenever we have a positive or a probable case in our school division, and whether we have a student who is a remote learner, an in-person learner, a staff member who is working in person, or a staff member who's working in an alternate location, we still provide that notification for transparency. So every time you see 5565630 show up on your cell phone, it may not necessarily be an in-person student. It could be anyone that is impacted by our school division, but through transparency, we provide that notice. And if you notice, many of those situations do not involve any close contacts. So that is a result of the work that we together have done to enforce social distancing, to make sure that we're mitigating to the greatest extent possible, and as a result of minimizing close contacts, we're able to continue our operations. So as I've been saying from the beginning, it is our collective responsibility that we stay home when we're sick, that we wear our face coverings, we wash our hands, and we institute those healthy practices we know have contributed to success. But there have been an increase in cases, and this is not a surprise to anybody. This is the number of probable or positive cases of students and staff per week. You can see some ups and downs, and you can see, as you can imagine, the Thanksgiving and the Christmas holiday have had an impact. And so how is this impacting our ability to staff our schools? And this graph, as it has in the past, shows staff and students who are either isolated or quarantined, and the number of staff or students who are staying home as a result of symptoms. They are not identified as positive COVID, but they are experiencing symptoms. And so this is our greatest challenge, whereby we were having conversations in August about our ability to staff our schools as a result of concerns amongst our workforce. We have been able to manage that and be able to work with our workforce about making sure that we have individuals in the classroom to meet the needs. Now, our challenge is when we have someone who is quarantined or someone who is isolated, can we backfill that position with a principal or an assistant superintendent or a substitute teacher? And so as of today, we've been able to staff our schools because our team has pulled together. It's who we are. We've found a way to make it happen as a result of understanding the importance of us serving our students day in and day out. But there are challenges, and I want to be transparent with that. We're making it happen because of what we believe in and who we are, but it's a day-to-day micromanagement, but we continue to do it because we know the importance of our work. This is a graph that we've showed periodically, or actually every month, board members, and right now, the numbers of individuals out on family medical leave or any other sort of leave is not significant. So again, this is a different slide than it was in August. Our ability to staff is for a different reason at this point in time, and so it's not as a result of leave requests, it's a result of folks that are just close contacts and things that are happening in the community. And I think it's important to note, too, that the cases that we have had in our school division are not a result of things that are happening inside of our schools. It's a result of community spread and a result of what is happening beyond the borders and walls of our schools. We have been very disciplined in our approach, and I applaud our parents for their support. I applaud our students for their compliance, and I applaud our staff for making sure that we are doing our part. And our schools are a safe place for our students as a result of our Phase III health plan and what we've been able to do, and I'm thankful for our team for that. So that's a highlight of where we are. I will share, board members, that we're very eager to hear what's next about the vaccination. There are school divisions across this Commonwealth where their teachers are receiving the vaccine. This is based on the locality and the local health district, and if there is a map on the Virginia Department of Health website that shows what localities are giving the vaccine to individuals in Group 1B and who's giving it to folks in Group 1A, we as K-12 professionals are in Group 1B, and so we are in the process of working in collaboration with the health district to do some things behind the scenes whenever there's enough vaccine to distribute to individuals in Group 1B, us, that we're ready to go. We sent a survey to our workforce today to say, when the vaccine comes available, are you going to take it or not? Or are you unsure at this point in time? So we're gathering that information, so whenever we get notice, we can deploy that quickly. So there is hope. I think within the first 10 minutes that survey was out, we had 100 respondents right away. So folks were eager to get their name on the list, and we can only hope that with that vaccine, things will certainly look ahead in a positive way for us. So board members, I wanted to share that update. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Want to have a question? Comments?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree with the parents and the students, because there's a lot of them, and they're doing such a great job and just so committed to... They want to be the children, and you can see in this picture, look how far they're spread apart. That's awesome that we were able to do that, and they're wearing their face coverings and just being great citizens to keep us moving forward. So I think that's fantastic. Thank you.
School is happening, board members, and school is happening in a positive way. Our teachers are crushing it, and our instructional assistants are supporting them, bus drivers are getting kids to and from school safely. Every member of our team is pulling together for our students to make this happen. I'm extremely proud of them and thankful to have the opportunity to serve alongside them. Next item on the agenda was Goochlin Reads. Board members, you know typically we have a book that we read across the school division in all of our elementary schools, and we are postponing that just one month. We're still going to do Goochlin Reads, but it's going to be during the month of February. Books haven't come in yet, but as soon as we get them, we'll provide them to you so that you can join us in our reading efforts. It's a... This year, we're taking on an environmental theme, I believe it is, and so we're excited about doing that, but more to come. Dr. Guyer is going to lead that effort for our behalf, as our librarians are now teaching classes for us for our distance learners. So more to come.
Look forward to that.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn.
Thank you. Well, you could just stay right there if you'd like, because our next item is the instructional report.
Okay. I believe that Goochlin Middle School is on the agenda as instructional report, and as we walked out of closed session, Mrs. Potter said, "Dr. Wagner and I have to call close contacts," and so they're collaborating on calling close contacts right now. But she does have a video that she is going to present, so I'll frame that and get that started for her, but it's a highlight of the work that they have been doing at Goochlin Middle School. She regrets that she can't be here, but she's doing that duty right next door to get in contact with her families.
Thank you. Principal's work is never done.
No, ma'am.
The Eagles of Goochlin Middle School began the school year in a distance learning model. From our period one, our students remain at home and learn from a distance via Google Meet. Here are some highlights.
Smart cookies, I do want you to make sure you are dropping me your Instagram yourself assignments. It's open today, either this afternoon or at the end of the year. If you haven't done it yet, so then I'll pop it, so we can get to know each other a little better. All right, you ready? Ready for the next one? Go choose hot so you can run. All right, go and find something Disney. Go! Oh, I want to choose what I want. Yeah. Got it. Oh, Caitlin. Caitlin's got a good arterial swell day. Joshua, get a movie, get a Disney movie. Oh, yeah, see, look, Robbie's got Star Wars, that counts. Look at Caitlin. Caitlin's got something Disney. Oh, we got a mug. I'm loving it. Okay. Love it. That's okay, Joshua. Joshua, you can look up a Disney picture on your iPad. That can count. You still have 25 seconds. Ooh, from Disney Springs. Yeah, that counts.
Again, as you said, that's okay. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and take the responses from this Google Form, and we're going to turn them into a map here, and we're going to export your responses to this form as a CSV file. The reason why I'm showing you this is because I'm going to want you guys to be able to do this on your own later on in the year. You're going to create your own Google Form, and you're going to take that Google Form, respond to those responses, turn those into a map. So we're going to download this as a CSV file. Would you shoot a hot bowl? Or a barbecue or ribs? Or maybe milk chicken? Or some camp with you all and do the food you all have been drilling. And if there were these people who said, "I want to become a vegetarian," then pretend I had vegetarian options of all these, right? I had an impossible burger, or an impossible chicken, or impossible pork to them to whatever. So if you're a vegetarian, pretend I had a vegetarian option there, you could go in and pick one.
Ah, see? Sisi. Me gusta mirar películas. Ah, sí, I like. Sisi. Te gusta mirar películas aquí? Sí. Sí. Sí, mirar películas. So all these buttons right here, you're going to push those differently to make different sounds, okay? Now, just like that trumpet and the trombone, if you do a softer one right here, that's a B flat.
And, oh guys, la fecha. So guys, look at the fecha. La fecha. Okay? La fecha no es al 24 de mayo. La fecha hoy es el 26. Sí? El 26 de agosto. El 26 de agosto. So la fecha. Thank you, Mari. That means the date. Exactly.
Kind of like our friend Kevin from Home Alone here. So as if you're surprised, making all our goodness, you want to take that deep breath and you don't have to put your hands on your face though. So you take that deep breath in with that surprise face.
This week, we are talking about physical wellness. Physical wellness means lots of different things. Making a plate that's full of different colors, lots of plants, lots of protein. Drink water. Please drink as much water as you can, and send me a schoolly message of how many cups of water a day you're drinking. In November, the GMS Eagles moved to a hybrid learning model. While many students continue to learn remotely, some return to school for in-person learning. Teachers adapted their instruction to engage both remote and in-person learners concurrently. Here are some highlights from hybrid learning.
So talk about how you decided, what you changed on, how you decided to make this change.
Yeah, so at first I had like two longish wheels, but then it was like way too heavy and it couldn't go. And so we...
Sam, oh, you. It's going, it's going.
So I would do a solid line. I would do a diamond line. What does a diamond line mean?
I would not. Really not.
All right, so from now, I want to show you how to use the watercolors. So some of you may be familiar, and some of you may not have used them for a while. So you need either a large watercolor, I mean a large container of water, or you need a stew, if they're smaller, because you always need to keep clean water work with. So what we're going to do is we're going to draw something to paint in, and I'm just going to draw just randomly.
Okay. Come on.
Like, um, the holidays, like you did with the pumpkin water, and then I just create bottom of it, or it's had a berry, and it's spread gradually, and it's lighter.
Oh.
Okay.
I can draw.
Hey, I'm very serious here. This looks really good, your whole MLA header looks great. Can you go in front of where it says "the I," where it says "I always love," put your little cursor in front of that real quick? Because I think our index is a little funny. So it looks like it's centered. So do you see how many keywords that appear? And I don't write names.
I'm watching both right now. Um...
How about 40?
This one I'm close to, and I'm wondering if it's a little bit higher.
I'm wondering if I can.
I think it's 40.
And then...
So from now, I want to show you how to use the watercolors. So some of you may be familiar, and some of you may not have used them for a while. So you need either a large watercolor, I mean a large container of water, or you need a stew, if they're smaller, because you always need to keep clean water work with. So what we're going to do is we're going to draw something to paint in, and I'm just going to draw just randomly.
Okay.
It's like, um, the holidays, like you did with the pumpkin water, and then I just create bottom of it, or it's had a berry, and it's spread gradually, and it's lighter.
Oh.
Okay.
I can draw.
Hey, I'm very serious here. This looks really good, your whole MLA header looks great. Can you go in front of where it says "the I," where it says "I always love," put your little cursor in front of that real quick? Because I think our index is a little funny. So it looks like it's centered. So do you see how many keywords that appear?
I'm watching both right now.
I don't know.
How about 40?
This one I'm close to, and I'm wondering if it's a little bit higher.
I'm wondering if I can.
I think it's 40.
And then...
Steve Bragerman. I'm also Kate Cooper's uncle, and I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about Veterans Day.
So, board members, as you can see, we never thought that we would be doing these things in March, or June, or July, or even August, but just so proud of everybody. It's, it's hard to put into words just what we saw here and how our teachers have just been creative and found a way in, you know, engaging kids and doing things that we never ever thought that we were going to do. And each day, we get better at it. You know, we get more and more experience. We change the way we're doing things so that we continually provide better experiences to kids, whether they're in person, whether they're from a distance. Everybody is really working hard to make sure that kids are, give them the best experience that they can. And proud of Goochlin Middle School's team. What you saw here is happening across the school division, in every school from preschool to 12th grade, and just thankful for our workforce for making it happen.
Madam Chair.
Just one thing, Dr. Reilly, just having the chance to tour several of the schools several times now, what you see in action is, is absolutely wonderful. This captures a lot of it, but the excitement and the precision with which the lessons are carried out. Every teacher has created an instructional place for them that works for them, and kids at home have done the same. And it's absolutely unbelievable, fascinating, and hats off to everyone.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Teague, what's your favorite part?
My personal favorite part, and for me and watching all of our students around, is that I get to choose my destiny and what works for me. I think it's so, so cool to see kids who've never really thrived in a school setting thrive and get these grades that are impeccable and get involved in things from an at-home, remote, or in-person learning. I got to go in-person learning for the first time on Thursday and Friday, and loved it and was just floored by how willing our teachers were to, to go back and forth between this and the people in the classroom, and just to create an interactive environment for everyone. So it's incredible.
Awesome. Great feedback.
That, that was everything, right there. Thank you, Mr. Teague.
So, so board members, next on the agenda is a presentation by Dr. Guyer. And just like our school division has adapted and evolved, the Virginia Department of Education is doing the same, and I want to thank them for the support they provided to us. We have a lot of flexibility now that we have not had in the past as a result of this pandemic, and it actually is going to be much, much better for kids as a result of some of the flexibility that we have. And so Dr. Guyer is going to hit some of those highlights for us tonight. Nice time. Thank you, Dr. Reilly, for the introduction, and Madam Chair, and Dr. Reilly, members of the board. As Dr. Reilly said, this really will be a brief update, and you all know, prior to the pandemic, the state SOL testing, we feel is important, but it is not at the top of our priority list. The individual growth of every one of our students is at the top of our priority list, and never has that been more important than, than the circumstances we're in this year. But under the circumstances, appropriate to provide the board and the public with an update on state testing and direction that we're being given from the Virginia Department of Education. So I'll be, I'll be relatively quick, but certainly happy to answer any questions that the board has. This just represents the last three academic years, and then obviously the disruption of the closure of schools in light of the pandemic, and really just to illustrate that that really was the point where state testing really became disrupted. And, and we'll get into kind of the impact last year and then the impact going into this year. So when you take those three academic years, on a typical year, we would administer 29 separate SOL tests across the school division, beginning in third grade, all the way through, and of course, tests at the high school. Prior to the pandemic, obviously during that 18, 19 school year and years before that, those tests played a part, a significant part in accountability in terms of federal accountability, as well as accreditation at the state level. That obviously was not the case last year. Accountability was waived both at the state level and at the federal level last year. You may wonder, oftentimes we think of SOL testing as just an endeavor that happens at the end of the school year. There are actually multiple testing windows throughout the year, which I'm sure you're well aware of. And prior to the closure, we had already administered some of our SOL tests last school year, so that's why that number 10 is there. And then for this school year, the number's 22. And so we'll talk a little bit about why that number 22 is the number as opposed to 29 during the 2018-19 school year. Again, as the board's aware, the public may not be, that at this point, federal accountability will come into play again in terms of state testing, and so that, that box is a, is a green yes for this year, as of today. And state accountability and accreditation is waived again this year, so that, that remains a no for the current school year. And then when we dig in a little bit on this academic year and the impact of state testing, again, to, to further explain that number of 22, this is an exciting development and really an opportunity where I think Virginia is taking a difficult situation and giving school divisions an opportunity to innovate and to lead, and really this is something that has been an interest in the state for a number of years, and an interest, as you all know, in Goochlin, far longer than that. We have been engaged in performance assessments and giving students alternate ways to demonstrate their mastery for many, many years. And frankly, we're a leader in Virginia and, and helped in a lot of ways guide the state program in terms of performance assessments. And so, so this, we really see this as an opportunity, and as an opportunity to take a more comprehensive view of students having the opportunity to demonstrate their learning. And so seven of those state SOL tests that would have made up that number 29 a couple of years ago are being replaced by locally developed performance assessments. And I won't read each bullet to you, but obviously you can see the courses there that are being given that flexibility. Primarily, they're in the area of history. Writing eight is also included in, in that. And as you know, we've been administering performance assessments across the school division in kindergarten through 12th grade for a number of years. And so those will replace those seven state SOL tests. Students will have the opportunity to participate in those local, locally developed performance assessments in person and/or at home. And so we're being given the flexibility where students can actually complete those performance assessments at home. So great, great level of autonomy and flexibility in terms of those performance assessments, again, that will replace seven of the traditional state SOL tests. All of the other SOL tests, the other 22 SOL tests at this point are to be given on campus in person under testing conditions. And the only disclaimer I'll give you there is that that guidance is from the Virginia Department of Education as of a couple weeks ago. Our understanding is the state board is planning to reengage in some of that discussion at their January board meeting, and so we'll certainly keep the board and the public up to date, but that is the guidance as of last month. And then the final piece that I wanted to spend just a minute on is some adjustments to the opportunity for locally awarded verified credits. And we could, as, as you know, we could get into the weeds and spend a lot of time on locally awarded verified credits. I won't choose to do that, but just to, to make sure you all are up to date on some emergency guidelines in light of the pandemic that do impact our school division and impact some flexibility that we're able to offer our students. And so the emergency guidelines per the superintendent's memo in December, the state superintendent's memo in December, created two pathways. And one has to do with fall of this school year SOL test administration. That really impacts high schools and middle schools that are on a different kind of master schedule than we're on, more that it impacts us, because we don't have a lot of semester-long classes. It did impact one course that was actually a Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School course, so we had one course impacted by that pathway. So not a lot of impact for our school division, some, but not a lot. And, and I'll get into the details of that a little bit more in just a second. The second pathway will have more impact for us. That impacts four courses, and those are courses that would be either spring semester courses or year-long academic courses, which is, is much more the case with our master schedule at the middle school and high school.
Dr. Guyer, excuse me. On items one and two, I think that and in between A, B, and C is important, so a student must pass the course and attempt the SOL and demonstrate mastery, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So they have to do all three of those within those choices, those pathways.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, and I'll, yep, I'll jump into the, the bottom part of the slide here in just a second. But yes, ma'am, that's true. And so the second pathway impacts four courses for us. So in total, five of our courses are impacted by these emergency guidelines, and I'll go through some of that detail as, as Ms. Horn referenced. So for the first one, students have to pass the course for both the first and the second pathway, students have to pass the course. So that is really a requisite to having the opportunity to earn this locally verified credit. And so that, I mean, that's, that's a positive thing in my estimation, that, that year-long performance in a teacher's class and the, the effort and the demonstration of mastery that a student puts forth over the course of an academic year is far more important than a one-day multi-choice test. And so passing the course becomes really critical, and our teachers are amazing at really working with students to try to give them every opportunity to pass those courses. So that's, that's step one. Students must, must attempt the SOL test in that first pathway and score between a 350 and a 399. Some flexibility there. Historically, that was between a 375 and a 399. So they've kind of broadened that window a little bit to give students more opportunity. And then they must demonstrate mastery through a locally determined verification process. Pretty nebulous, they're giving us, giving us a lot of flexibility with that first pathway. The second pathway is somewhat similar, but they've included the language around that that verification process must include responses to performance assessment tasks. So that's where that performance assessment piece comes in, that we're well positioned for and prepared for in all, every one of these instances. And so that's really the exciting part, is to really use our performance assessments, not because, not just because we believe it's the right thing for students to have the opportunity to demonstrate learning in a multiple, a variety of ways, but it's now a... And I'll go through some of that detail as, as Ms. Horn referenced. So for the first one, students have to pass the course for both the first and the second pathway. Students have to pass the course. So that is really a requisite to having the opportunity to earn this locally verified credit. And so that, I mean, that's, that's a positive thing in my estimation. That, that year-long performance in a teacher's class, and the, the effort and the demonstration of mastery that a student puts forth over the course of an academic year is far more important than a one-day, multi-choice test. And so passing the course becomes really critical. And our teachers are amazing at really working with students to try to give them every opportunity to pass those courses. So that's, that's step one. Students must, must attempt the SOL test in that first pathway and score between a 350 and a 399. Some flexibility there. Historically, that was between a 375 and a 399. So they've kind of broadened that window a little bit to give students more opportunity. And then they must demonstrate mastery through a locally determined verification process. Pretty nebulous. They're giving us, giving us a lot of flexibility with that first pathway. The second pathway is somewhat similar, but they've included the language around that that verification process must include responses to performance assessment tasks. So that's where that performance assessment piece comes in, that we're well-positioned for and prepared for in all, every one of these instances. And so that's really the exciting part, is to really use our performance assessments, not because, not just because we believe it's the right thing for students to have the opportunity to demonstrate learning in a multiple, a variety of ways, but it's now required, and we're in a position where we can respond to that without having to scramble, like a lot of school divisions, frankly, are going to have to scramble to, to produce those. So those are the two pathways established by the emergency guidelines for locally verified credits. And again, related to this SOL testing update, it's definitely much more detailed than the big-picture information that I provided. But I did want to spend just a minute and make sure the Board was well-versed on that. And that, that really concludes my update. Happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Want to have any questions?
Thank you.
I have one question about the performance assessments. I know that, that many, many hours have been spent by many staff members to create these performance assessments. Was there a time necessary to create new ones this year? Or with everything else going on? Or did we already have enough assessments in place that were doing what we needed to do, measuring what we needed to measure this year?
Yes, ma'am. This, this, because the stakes were raised, obviously, with this guidance. We had have everything in place, but we chose to dedicate some time to revisit some of these specifically in these areas that are, that are now required. And just make sure teachers felt really good about them. Everyone feels like it's our best work in terms of curriculum development and assessment development. And so that work has happened. So it was, it was finished. And I would say it was, some of these were A-minus work, and we wanted to make sure they were A-plus work. So we did go back and spend a little bit more time. But the vast majority of the work was done prior to the, these emergency guidelines.
I guess the practice in how to develop them was, that was already done. But I appreciate that more time was spent on it, because obviously, it, it's very important to the students' success, and whether they get those credits or not. So taking that time, even with everything else, that, that's impressive. So thank you for all that work.
Yeah. And that's, that's our amazing teachers who took the time to revisit those. So thanks goes to them, for sure.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Guyer? All right. That takes us to item 15. We have some information items. And within those items, we have two policies that we will be looking at for first read, because they affected our organizational duties this evening. So, Dr. Reilly, would you introduce us, please?
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Horn. So I'm going to ask Lisa Landrum, our supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services, to come forward. And you heard in my presentation earlier this evening, the just Herculean work that our food service team has done. And I'll tell you, we have amazing people in the trenches doing just exceptional work every day. They are led by an exemplary professional, in my opinion, who provides the support to them and allows them to do their work. And last month, you heard from our maintenance and transportation professionals, I wanted to give Ms. Landrum a chance to highlight the amazing work of her team tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Reilly. Good evening, school board members.
Evening.
This evening, I would like to highlight our curbside meal distribution a little bit, since that has been ongoing, ongoing since mid-March. On March the 17th, we began using the Summer Food Service Program that was allowed by USDA, so we could feed all children ages 18 and under meals at no charge. I put the number of breakfast and lunch meals served in the time period of March the 17th through the July 31st. I also put our average for that time period. And as you can see, there's quite a drop there. However, that same drop was nationwide. On average, there was a loss and excess of 400 million meals that were served to school-aged children, which is very sad.
Wow.
However, USDA is now allowing us to serve free meals through the entire 2021 school year. It started out to end on August the 31st. Then it was changed to end December the 31st. And now it's through June 30th, 2021. And I was so happy to see that. I would like to report, excuse me, that our food service numbers are going up. Breakfast has increased about 42%. Lunch has increased 163%. And I credit this to the restart of school. Our school cafeteria is excellent customer service. Our district website and social media, community word of mouth, and consistency in our program. And again, the average for this period is still much higher than what we're doing now. However, I do feel like that our program will continue to grow. Okay. On December the 18th, we decided we were going to try something new, something else new. And we sent meals home to children 18 and under for the entire winter break. In a very short period of time, we served 5,490 breakfast meals and 5,459 lunch meals. This was a total of 10,949 meals distributed over a three-and-a-half-hour period. I know, I know. I thought that was, that was so cool. It's not sustainable, obviously, but, but it was really cool.
I can testify to that.
Yes, yes. We, we did have some school board members help us with that. And unfortunately, the last 31 people that showed up only got breakfast meals. But again, this was something brand-new to us, and I think we handled it pretty well. And with that, I really want to thank and applaud our food service team for their dedication and teamwork. Diane, I can't. There we go. Thank you. Their teamwork, their hard work, their dedication. I mean, this was not an easy task. And on the last slide, I just wanted to highlight the employees who have worked both the spring and summer breaks to consistently serve our community. Do you all have any questions about our food service program? Any questions about our food service program?
Bless your heart.
Thank you. I'll take comments, yes.
It's hard work, because I know I've been out there.
Yes.
And you've got it so well organized.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Well, it, it's, my managers are great.
Oh, they are.
All the cafeteria workers are great.
I mean, Elsie.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, she's wonderful.
And I'll, I'll just add that I think you highlighted initially customer service, but that stands out with our school food service department far above and beyond any I've ever seen. So thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
The number of lunch and breakfast meals certainly being lower makes sense, because there's not as many students as school.
Correct.
Even though you're providing curbside meals, there's still, there's still a lot of children that are eating at home, because they are at home during their school day. So, so that makes, that makes a lot of sense, that those numbers are lower. I think what really touches me is that you are still so concerned that there are children who are going hungry. So that number really matters to you.
It does.
Because even if those children are sitting at home, you want them to be fed. So again, that speaks to, to your, who you are as a person, your character. And we really appreciate that so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn.
I can't think about, I cannot believe the logistical issues of delivering almost 11,000 meals in three and a half hours. I had no idea that you were an octopus.
I'm just thankful it was the day before our winter break, so that all the ladies could have time to forgive me, to be perfectly honest with you. But I'm very proud of them. They, they do a wonderful job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right. Next, Board members, I'm going to ask Dr. Jennifer Wagner to come to the podium. I highlighted the excellence of our special education program earlier this evening, recognizing that they are one of only 20 school divisions who two years in a row have received a perfect rating on both compliance and performance measures. At this point in time in the year, we highlight the data associated with our December 1st child count. This informs some of our funding as well. We've been tracking this historically for many, many years, and so we want to hit that highlight. And then also, there has been a recent report by the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee from the General Assembly. It's really going to have a significant impact on special education programming across the Commonwealth. We're blessed to have Dr. Wagner leading us in this effort. There's going to be some significant change, I believe, coming from Richmond as a result of this, but we're poised and ready to tackle that with excellence, as we always have. Dr. Wagner?
Awesome. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you all so much for taking time out of your busy schedule. I know we've all been here for a long time, but to listen to some updates for special education. And you guys are pretty used to us by now. I hope you guys can hear me. You guys are pretty used to the December 1 child count report. So I'll go over that, as I always do, in January. And then as Dr. Reilly mentioned, there was a J-LARC report that came out that evaluated K through 12 special education services in Virginia. And then I'll just also talk a little bit about my reflections on that J-LARC report, and things that we will be doing to kind of address some of the concerns that were raised in that report. So first, the December 1 child count report, that's a report that we complete every year as required by the Virginia Department of Education. And that report really is just a snapshot of the number of students who are enrolled in special education on December 1 of 2020. It has implications for SOQ funding, and it's just also mandated by federal law. And so this is a graphic that I show you guys every year, and I just add to it every year. But this just shows our trends over time. So it looks at what our December 1 child count was in 2013, all the way up through 2020, December 1, 2020. And then those bars represent our total student population count, and then the, the yellow dots are our students with disabilities. And so you'll see that in 2019, we had 363 students with disabilities enrolled on December 1. And then in 2020, that dropped to 353 students. So there's a difference of 10, but we still remain proportionate. So in 2019, the 363 students with disabilities out of 2,619 is, I believe, 13.9% of our student population. And if I'm remembering correctly, for 2020, it was 13.7%. So while we did drop, it was, you know, just a reflection of the drop in population. But again, we have grown pretty dramatically since 2013, from being at 299 students to, to 353. This next graph is just showing the number of students with disabilities by school. And again, the bars represent total student population. I will mention that Goochland Elementary's numbers are artificially inflated. We run our early childhood special education program out of Goochland Elementary. And so our youngest students with disabilities, ages 2 through 5, regardless of where they live in the county, their program is at Goochland Elementary, and that's why that number looks a little bit higher. And then this is just a reminder of the disability categories that qualify students for special education services. There's 13 disability categories, and that's important, because the next slide just looks at the, the prevalence of disability categories of our students. And you can see that while there are 13 disability categories, there are really three disability categories that comprise the majority of our special education population. So 70% of our kids that receive special education services either have a speech or language impairment, other health impairment, or a specific learning disability, and, or some kind of combination of the three, because you can have multiple disabilities. Other prevalent disability categories include autism, which comprises about 11% of our students with disabilities, and developmental delay, which is our youngest kiddos who are below the age of seven. And then all of those other categories, I just kind of lumped together, because they make up about 12% of our population. And then if you guys have spent any time with me, you know that I'm super passionate about increasing inclusive opportunities for our kids with disabilities. So this is always my favorite part of the December 1 report. This statistic, one of the statistics, or one of the things that's collected through the December 1 report, is the amount of time that our kids with disabilities spend alongside their non-disabled peers. And in Goochland, I'm proud to say that that's 89% of our kids with disabilities spend the majority of their time around their non-disabled peers. And that compares to the state average of 71%. So I continue to be impressed with that. Oh, well, and that's all I have for the December 1 report. Those are kind of the highlights. And that's usually the information that I present to you guys. But the, the other thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about was the, the J-LARC report. And Dr. Reilly mentioned some of this already, but this was a study that started in 2018. It really just looked at special education programming throughout the state of Virginia. It was pretty comprehensive. It looked at how we identify kids with disabilities, how we implemented special education services. It looked at graduation rates, and it looked at how we transitioned kids from high school to whatever was next for them in life. And they interviewed, this committee interviewed special education directors, parents, teachers. There was a survey for special education directors. They reviewed a sample of IEPs, which are Individualized Education Programs, kind of the, every student with a disability has one. It outlines annual goals for our kids, and then the services and supports we provide them. So they looked at a sampling of those IEPs as well. And as I'm sure you realize, with a comprehensive report, that's 153 pages, there are also comprehensive findings. And so the next two slides kind of review some of those major findings, but there are many more. And I won't read the entire slide, but one of the big findings is that the J-LARC committee continues to see that students with disabilities are less likely to graduate high school than other students. Something else that they found is just that the quality of the IEPs varies from division to division. So they sometimes found that necessary information wasn't in IEPs, and that sometimes, if a child moved from one school division to the next, the new school division couldn't pick up that IEP and figure out how to serve the child. Other concerns were noted with what's called post-secondary transition. And then that is, again, for, we are mandated to help students figure out what's next for them in life after high school, whether that's college or a career path. And so they just found some areas of improvement for us in that area. Another thing that they found is that too many of our students with disabilities are graduating with what's called an Applied Studies Diploma. Applied Studies Diploma is a diploma, diploma option that's available for kids with disabilities, whereas the standard diploma and the advanced diploma have pretty specific requirements related to course credits and verified credits, passing the SOL. The Applied Studies Diploma is really just a certificate of completion. So it means that our students master their IEP goals. And so what they found was, too many students with disabilities are graduating with that Applied Studies Diploma, and that there's just not enough transparency in speaking with parents and students about some implications related to that diploma. The biggest implication likely being that you can't take an Applied Studies Diploma and get into a community college or college without some extra work that needs to be done. Something else that was found is just perceptions that general education teachers and school-based administrators just maybe don't have the training they need to adequately support students with disabilities. And then something that I think we all have discussed is a special education teacher shortage, and that unfortunately, many school divisions open the school year with unfilled vacancies, or vacancies that are filled by those that don't have that special education teaching endorsement. Something that we, knock on wood, haven't had to deal with is the Virginia Department of Education intervening with any kind of state complaints that parents might make of school divisions not complying with IEPs. But J-LARC found that there just wasn't sufficient follow-up from the Department of Ed with school divisions when they are in the wrong. And then lastly, they feel strongly that school divisions need to be more closely monitored, or their special education programs need to be more closely monitored. So those were the findings. And when you have that many findings, you got to have a good bit of recommendations, too. And so these are some of the recommendations that really involve a lot of technical assistance from the Virginia Department of Education in terms of our eligibility criteria, and also establishing more firm criteria for that Applied Studies Diploma that I just mentioned. They also talked a lot about teacher prep programs, and some ideas of how we can increase general education teacher knowledge and school administrator knowledge of how to support students with disabilities. Again, they would like a robust plan for supervising and monitoring local special education programs. They also mentioned needing more resources devoted to recruiting and retaining special education teachers. And they would like to promote the role of a parent ombudsman, which we have at the Department of Ed, a little bit better. we have at the Department of Ed, a little bit better. So, it was a lot of information. I have quite a few reflections and feelings about this, and honestly, I feel pretty strongly that this paints special education in Virginia in a pretty negative light. And that's hard for someone who's very passionate about advocating for students with disabilities, and for someone who's in charge of special education programming, to see, read, digest. I will say, I strongly believe that Goochlin outshines, our special education program outshines many other special education programs across the state. And a silver lining to all of this is better advocacy for students with disabilities, and hopefully more resources for special education. So I do appreciate being in the spotlight, at least special education teachers. I just wish that the findings weren't as negative as they are. We've been working, even though I do feel we've outshined many other special education programs, I obviously won't rest until all of my students with disabilities are experiencing success at school, and we're not there yet. And so some of the areas that we've been working on are graduation rates and diploma options for students with disabilities, and these are just some of the strategies that we use. Each of our schools have school-based data meetings, but our high school in particular has really worked hard to develop what they call at-opportunity lists, and they use these lists for intervention planning and supports, and they check in frequently with students on this list. Students who make this list are in danger of graduating, not graduating on time, or not with the diploma that we would like for them to graduate with. There's also something called special permission locally awarded verified credits. I won't get into the weeds on it, but it's a really cool thing that's come about maybe over the past two years, where our students with disabilities don't have to pass the SOL in order to get their verified credit. There's loopholes and hoops we have to jump through, but if we can attribute the failure of that SOL to the student's disability, and there's a couple of other criteria to meet, it helps us get them a verified credit. And the more we can build up those verified credits, the closer they are to a standard diploma. And of course, that's what we want instead of the applied studies diploma. This year, in this hybrid model that we're working in at the high school, you know that we have students that are in either cohort A or cohort B. We've established some criteria for students with disabilities to come in four days a week in both cohort A and cohort B, because we know that not all students with disabilities can thrive in that hybrid setting, or in a virtual setting. And then we also have transparent conversations with parents about some of the impacts of not being instructed on the SOLs, and what that can mean for diploma options. For transition planning, we have a part-time transition specialist, and over the past two years, we've really worked to triage how her time is spent, so that she's really spending time with those students that we've identified with disabilities, who are most at risk for having issues with transitioning after high school. And then I just listed some of the initiatives we're using. We have a Discovering Me project as a grant with VCU's Center on Innovation and Transition to kind of help us with meeting the needs of those that are most at risk for issues with transitioning. And I'm Determined is a self-advocacy and self-determination project through the Virginia Department of Education that we use as early as elementary school to help building those, to help build those skills, to hopefully help with transition planning as well. And then lastly, recruiting and retaining is probably one of, well, that's not true. I have a lot of favorite parts of my job, but this is another passion of mine. And so I just listed some of the things that I know you guys have all heard before about what we do in order to retain and recruit the best of the best. I know we can't ever say that there's going to be this one factor that truly impacts and changes the achievement of students with disabilities, because that would simplify things way too much. But if I had to simplify things, I think recruiting the strongest of the strong to work with our most at-risk learners is where we get the best bang for our buck. And so these are some of the strategies we've used in the past to help recruit and retain strong teachers. And then just speaking of our amazing teachers and retaining them, I just wanted to give them a shout out. We often show our appreciation for teachers in general, but sometimes our special education teachers don't get the limelight. And so I just wanted to take a moment to thank them. They are the reason why our special education program outshines other special education programs. We have teachers, special education teachers at our preschool and at our secondary, middle and high, that are simultaneously providing specially-designed instruction to in-person learners as well as virtual learners at the same time. We have other special education teachers who are servicing kids in person, and then after the traditional school day is over, are servicing kids virtually. We have a library and media specialist who has become a special education teacher to help us support our virtual students with disabilities. We have related services personnel who are working around the clock to figure out how to provide speech therapy and occupational therapy and physical therapy, both virtually and in person. And some of them have even altered their schedule to provide services to students in the evening, because they know that parents are working our virtual students. They know that that's when parents are home and when therapy will be best. And then we have collaborative teaching pairs, both, so our regular education teachers as well as our special education teachers are definitely helping us figure this out as we figure out how to support students in both environments. And then lastly, the unsung heroes, our instructional assistants who have managed to provide behavior management in our learning labs. They are supporting students who are virtual learners, and they are providing in-person support to some of our most needy students as well. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and really thank them, because the program that we have today is because of this amazing staff. So all that being said, I know I talked a whole lot. Open to any questions or comments you guys have.
No question, Mr. Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. One of the things that, if two questions I have or statements I'd like to make first, when we were doing the tours, as Mr. Newman had said earlier on this today, the seamlessness of having teachers or children that have disabilities integrated in the schools is such a wonderful opportunity for them, because their self-esteem and everything is looked like it's enhanced 50 times from a pass-through observer. So I have to applaud you on that, because that's one of the strong things. If they're going to be better, they're going to have to be better and work within the group that they are going to be out away from school. So that's always a good, a good, a good thing for a child as far as their growth is concerned. The other question I had, though, was the IEP. Since that was a problem throughout, that they noticed that there wasn't consistency. Now, I don't know if it's just because we didn't pull that one out. Are they going to do something about that? And have come up with a standard so everyone can be using the same inputs, if you will?
Yeah, good question. And just so you know, the sample of IEPs they pulled was through this online IEP system that we actually don't use. So they did not look at our IEPs. But many divisions use the same IEP online system, so they looked at a sample through there. They're supposed to be giving us more guidance on what specific things they're looking for in an IEP. They give us pretty clear guidance, so I'm not sure if the IEPs they reviewed just didn't include that, or if there's maybe more explicit ways they want us to word things, so they're easier to find. But 10 years ago, probably 10 years ago, we went through pretty comprehensive monitoring, and it was pretty painful. They would come observe classrooms, we would have to pull a ton of files, we'd sit through hour-long interviews, and then they would give us a bunch of feedback of, you know, how we can improve things. And then, more recently, most of the reporting we do is something through our special education indicators, which is done in July. It's a lot of data that we have to give to them. So a lot of it is more self-reported data monitoring right now, and so the suggestion through J-LAR is to go back to those onsite visits. And that, to me, causes me a lot of heartburn, because it's just a lot of stress to put on our staff, when I think the current monitoring works pretty well for us. And the way they work it now is, if you score high enough on those special education indicators, the Department of Ed doesn't feel the need to come out to do that onsite monitoring. So they almost triage their monitoring. And so now the suggestion is that all 132 school divisions get the monitoring.
Thank you for all the work you all did.
Madam Chair, just to follow Mr. Quarles' thoughts about the IEP, it was the thing that caught my attention as soon as he began speaking, that the quality of IEPs is a concern. My experience is that IEPs are not haphazardly written, and that they are the plan for the student's instruction, and that there are internal kinds of protocols in the schools to be sure that the best plan is arrived at. And it's been, you know, special education teachers, regular education teachers. Are there any particular things that Goochlin is doing to ensure that IEPs are of great quality for each student? And I think I know the answer, but I just want you to comment on it, because I've missed a few years now.
Yeah, so I have some amazing supports. Abby Miller, Wendy Travis, and Sarah Franklin Murray, if you're not familiar with them. Wendy helps supervise our preschool program, Abby helps supervise elementary special education, and Sarah helps me supervise middle and high school special education. And our draft IEPs for all middle and high school teachers, anytime they write an IEP, it goes through Sarah as another lens to make sure we're including what we need to include. At elementary, we triage that out, so it's not every IEP we look over, but there are certain IEPs when we know kids have more needs or they're more involved that we do look over. And then Wendy is in every IEP meeting at the preschool level, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
No problem.
Madam Chair, could you elaborate a little bit on that program that Ann Keough talked about last night?
Sure, yes. So Ms. Bearflit Reed is our school board representative on our special ed advisory committee meeting, because Mr. Wright took a little siesta from us. He misses it, though.
She won the arm wrestle.
And so, one of the concerns, or one of the things that our CAC brought to our attention was just feeling like we're doing a lot of equity work, and they really like the equity work that we are doing, but they also want to make sure that when we think of equity, we're not just thinking through one lens. And so they really want to make sure that some of this equity work looks at differing abilities. And so Dr. Fowler, who I think you guys all know, and Mrs. Keough, who's one of our instructional coaches, spoke briefly last night at our CAC about windows and mirrors, or mirrors and windows, I always flip those two. And I don't want to spoil it too much, because I know they're also going to do a presentation a little bit later for ACE. But they're really looking for some input on how we can expand our classroom instruction and our books that we're using during instruction to, so that the books that we're reading and instructing on really have more authentic voices and represent all of us. So it really preaches inclusion, authenticity, and they asked our CAC to help give some recommendations from that disability perspective, to ensure that that work is inclusive of special education.
And Ms. Horn, we're going to ask Dr. Fowler to provide us with an update at a later board meeting on that. It's really something we're very proud of in expanding our lens of equity through looking at it from a different perspective. And so, excited that was very well received by CAC last night, and look forward to sharing that to a larger audience.
Excellent.
If I may. Simple question. So we dropped 10 in the child count from one year to the next. Any sense of how much of that is just the natural maturation of people who were seniors last year and no longer here versus people who've made some sort of choice about their educational opportunities?
Here's the hard thing. Our count on December 2nd is different than our count on December 1st, which is different than our count today. So kids are always being found eligible, kids are always being found ineligible, kids are moving, kids are homeschooled. So I didn't, we didn't have a huge senior cohort that left us, so that wasn't it. We did have some families that chose homeschooling or, you know, private schooling, but that I don't even think shows the full picture, because really, that count, if I looked today, it could be 363. It's just, that's the date they picked to compare, and I get why there is that consistent date, because the numbers change every day.
Sure.
I didn't look too much into it. I did kind of eyeball our rosters, but because it was still proportionate with the overall number, I'm just assuming that it's a reflection of the doc.
I just, having spent so much time with you over the years, I know that you know all of the families. You know all of the students that you serve. And so, I just, I thought you may have some sort of sense, but I now understand that that's like, you know, trying to find the straight line in a bowl of spaghetti, so that's okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I have a few questions. First of all, I was going to comment that, just like Mr. Wright did, that there's probably few people in your position who know every student, who know every teacher, and right there is a huge part of why somebody would want to be a part of the special education team here. So thank you for all your heart and your work. I appreciate it so much. IEPs, I would imagine that the follow-through is challenging with the students who are virtual, the students who are in person. What, what have teachers found that's helping them be successful in the follow-through?
It's really the relationships. It all, I mean, it always falls back to the relationships, right? So relationships with parents to be open and honest about concerns that they're having, and, and just really the teacher being so close with the student to kind of know when that student needs more. I don't know if you're talking about the follow-through on the lovely paperwork side where we've had to do.
The actual students getting the goals, reaching their goals.
Yeah, yeah, so our teachers, so the, during our first secondary schedule before we did the staggered start, there were these office hours that many of our students with disabilities took advantage of. And now with just that staggered start, the office hours aren't really as accessible as they used to be, so many of our teachers stay after school to help. And then if we're doing what we need to do bell-to-bell in differentiating instruction, then a lot of that time can happen in our collaborative classes as well. There's also something called recovery services. So back when schools were closed, we obviously acknowledged that students missed some services when we were totally closed. And so IEP teams meet and look at data from prior to March 13th, during when we were closed, and then now that we're open, and they look for regression. We know all schools, all students regress, but we know that students with disabilities are at risk for regressing a little bit more, so in those cases, we add in what's called recovery services to help kind of gain back some of that loss as well.
Certainly, the applied studies and any diploma is a great concern, because we want students to transition into something meaningful in their lives. And certainly, because special education has such a broad spectrum, there's, there's a lot of students who are going to be quite successful. But any that we lose, you know, there was some of the first bullets on that page, if you think about it, if a child doesn't get that, what that does to their ability to be independent in their lives, to have meaningful work. So I understand why you're, you're very passionate about that subject. If a student opts for the applied studies diploma at this time in their life, can they later go and take the GED, and that would then open other doors for them?
Yes, they can. Also, any student who graduates with an applied studies diploma is eligible to return to school until their 22nd birthday to pursue a higher diploma. So they could choose at 18 to graduate with an applied studies, six months later decide, nope, I want my standard, and then they can re-enroll in school and work towards getting their standard diploma, if they have a disability, which, to get an applied U.
There might be some real motivation for that, after they get up there and try and realize that they still could do some work and improve their situation. So I'm glad that that option is there. A lot of this is, you know, when you look at that J-LAR, they're looking at resetting quite a bit. But we also have to look at our teacher prep program, because for many, many years, special education's teacher prep program was a lot of special education courses. How am I going to make these changes in curriculum and instruction to help these students be successful? Then we got into the whole highly qualified era, where the special education teachers had to take, you know, almost a second major in some core area, which limited the number of classes they could take that were actually underspared in their college. What do you, do you think that this reset is going to have an effect on our teacher prep programs?
I sure hope so. I, I often think you know the endorsement information a little bit more than I do, but it's my understanding that they are trying to make it easier for general education teachers to add a special education endorsement. Now, I hope that as they make that easier, they also beef up some of the teacher prep programs. programs for general ed endorsements to really focus on how to support students with disabilities. But I'm hoping that that is, you know, a benefit and something that might come out of this study, is more of a push for that. And we've had some success with converting general education teachers to special education teachers in the past, so I'd like to see more of that.
Thank you so much for this great report. And I just wish you all the luck. I know that you are not just working so hard here, but you're probably providing some really good voice at another level to help improve this too for all of our students. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That is our two reports on the information items. And we are now looking at the policy revision of BCF Advisory Committees to the School Board. And this revision board is a very simple one because during this year, MSAC changed their name to Advisory Committee for Equity and Education. So before we assigned somebody to that committee, we wanted to make sure that the name of the committee was correct. So you will see in policy BCF, the change was the fourth bullet from Minority Student Achievement Committee to Advisory Committee for Equity and Education. So.
I'll make a motion that we accept the change as written.
A second?
That would be for first reading, Mr. Corrigan?
First reading, correct.
First read.
Thank you.
Yes.
We're all on point now.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so we have a first, we have a motion and a second to approve the policy revision to BCF Advisory Committees to the School Board for first read. And when we get to our action items, we will then be able to vote to a second reading. All right. The next one's going to take a little bit more time. This is, you know, this is an information item, but we're going to discuss this and try to work to a first read approval.
We have to.
Oh, did we vote? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was ready for the second read on that. All right, back to C. So we had a first, we had a motion and a second to approve for first read. So now we will vote, as I restated, to approve BCF with the changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, now, thank you so much for catching me on that. I was so ready to do D. All right, so now we're at the first read for D. And this is the policy BBAB Code of Ethics for Goochlan County School Board Members. And Ms. Bennett, can you pull that Google Doc item up for me? So this is a really important document for us, and it's a code of ethics. We have sets of goals, we have school board policies specific to our powers and duties as school board members. And this is not just a policy, but as part of our organizational meeting, this is actually a document that we sign, each of us signs individually to say that, yes, we are going to, we agree to these, this code of ethics, and this is how we are going to behave. So it's originally, well, first of all, the VSB document had 12 behaviors in it. And in 2013, the school board revisited this code of ethics, and we got to a list of 19 behaviors. And personally, I don't want anything with 19 on it anymore, so I'm happy to revise.
I'm deeply offended.
Pardon?
I said I'm deeply offended.
Well, there was no COVID-19 back in 2015. So I'm kidding, but, you know, it's certainly 2013 to 2020, a lot has changed in our world. So I think it's a good, a good thing to look at this. And we're supposed to look at it every five years, so.
We did, but we just.
You didn't change anything?
Right.
Yes. Okay, excellent. All right, so again, ethics, I put the definition in this Google Doc just to remind us, it's moral principles that govern a person's behavior or the conducting of an activity. So if we look at this document, I don't think we can make a motion before we discuss it. I think we're going to have to discuss it before we make a motion. So in, that being said, individual board members submitted ideas in this Google Doc that Diane Bennett had on her, her computer or in her documents as well. And so different ideas have been put in here, but certainly welcome any new ideas tonight. So let's look at number one. Does anyone have any comments about number one?
No, ma'am, I like the inclusion of academic growth and achievement.
Okay.
I agree.
As well.
As well.
All right, all right. So maybe I was the only one thinking that that was more the superintendent's work, but as far as a behavior, so.
I mean, we're chart, we can delegate that.
But we oversee it.
To the superintendent, but I still believe that that is.
We're responsible for it and we oversee it.
Okay, excellent.
That is my concern. So the operative word there is, you know, that my first and greatest concern is this. Well, I certainly want that, so I'm going to.
Okay.
I would stick with that.
Excellent. Ms. Bennett, on that Google Doc then, could you take that out of red and yellow so we can get down to, I don't know. Okay, I guess I'll have to do it then. All right, so we're going to be changing the academic growth and achievement out of the red and yellow. Let's see if I can do that real quickly here. Oh, yes, I can. Is that changing on what you're seeing?
Yep.
Because I'm focusing.
Do you want to take away the underline?
Yes, I'm going to take away the underline. Again, we're working to where we have a document, we have another source of the actual before. So here, I'm just changing so we know what we're going to be agreeing to. And I need to do highlight as a nothing, yes.
If I may suggest that we keep it as red?
Could you keep it as red just so that we know?
No, what was, what was added, yeah?
Yeah, and actually, I think we're fine here because we've not changed anything. So what you're doing is okay. But my thought was, is that, so we didn't feel the need to have, or for me, if I were in your position, I'd think there's 20 people watching me type and make mistakes. So I would, I would suggest that perhaps what we do is make an agreement here as to what we will sign as both a temporary and then perhaps a clean version at our next meeting.
Exactly.
To get everything straight.
Okay, all right, great. I just, when we get that, this one's easy, but the reason I was doing that is because we're going to get down and it's going to be, there's a lot more ideas.
Got you.
I am fine with that. I appreciate that, and I will follow with that. All right. Item number two was a statement that is a total statement that's being suggested to be added. And this statement came from our resolution, and it literally came from our resolution. So it reads, "Reserve to condemn racism and affirm the division's commitment to an inclusive school environment where equal educational opportunities shall be available for all students without regard to sex, sexual orientation, race, creed, color, national origin, gender, gender identity, ethnicity, religion, disability, ancestry, marital or parental status, or any other unlawful basis." So there was a couple of suggestions made here. So board members, what is your pleasure?
The question, I guess the question, I don't have a problem because we did this resolution.
Yes.
However, as you indicated before, a behavior or of ethics, I'm not sure if you need the racism in there as it is. Resolve to condemn and affirm the division's commitment to an inclusive school environment because the isms can occur in each of those items there, right? So I don't know if you need to just pick out racism.
We've already got raced down here further too.
Okay.
Without regard to sex.
So we can, maybe we remove the word racism.
Okay.
And then we're down to the discussion about whether we are in the present or future tense.
Correct.
As Ms. Barefoot Reed pointed out. So I would tend to agree with her that we're in the present tense so we can strike the word shall be.
All right. All right, so we're going to take out the word racism. And we are going to use the word are. Ms. Bennett, are you able to capture that something?
If you take out racism, you're probably going to take out condemn, right?
Condemn also.
Yes. All right, so resolve to.
To affirm.
Resolve to affirm. Oh, yes, you're right. All right, so we're going to resolve to affirm. So we're really putting it in the positive. So, okay, I like that. All right, so resolve to affirm, Mrs. Bennett. All right, any other suggestions for number two?
No, ma'am.
All right, super. All right, so then what that does to this list, it changes the numbering, so it's probably going to be off a couple of places. Three, make every effort to attend scheduled board meetings. Anybody have a question about that? No. Number four, come to board meetings informed as to the issues under consideration.
All right, very good.
Very, that's a basic behavior. Number five.
Scroll up on the screen. Thank you.
Number five, encourage individual board member expression of opinion and respect the right to other board members to have and express ideas that differ. Any comments? Just jump in. Number six, work collaboratively with other members to establish effective policies. Number seven, place the welfare of children and the school division as a whole above any loyalty to individuals, voting districts, particular schools, or other interest groups. And that takes us to what I guess is number eight. Be fair, open and honest, and exercise integrity in all manners.
Matters.
Matters, excuse me. All right, now we're getting to suggestion. Add nine and 10 as new items and renumber for a total of 22, or include what are numbers 12 and 13 below. So you have a couple of options there to consider whether we have two individual items or we try to build them into one behavior item. What is your preference there? Take a few minutes and read that.
I feel like I'm the kid in the front of the class who keeps raising his hand, going, call me. But I like them as two separate items. I like for number 10, I prefer the second version of it to the first simply because I think, you know, that may compromise the decision-making ability. Well, we can either make them, we have, we have the ability to make them or not. I think it's the decision-making process that we're, we're looking to make sure that we're not.
Any other thoughts there?
Okay.
All right, so nine and 10. So that means that.
Yeah, we're renumbering some as we move forward, but.
Right. So that nine and 10 are individual items with the second option process being the choice there. Then in accordance with, what is number nine in the blue, in accordance with GCPS policies, communicate full board and superintendent public reaction opinions on matters regarding school programs, policies, and operations of GCPS. That was from the original document. I don't, didn't get any thoughts on changes there. Number 10, which would then become, I guess, number, what's in blue, nine would be 11, what's in blue, 10 would be 12. Communicate and act in a manner. I'm sorry?
Once they're approved, you can get the numbering set up.
Correct.
Approved or disproved.
Yes. Communicate and act in a manner that will encourage and facilitate an open two-way communication process with all segments of our community. Awesome. Number 11, render all of my, or 11 in blue, render all of my decisions based on available facts, appropriate public input, and my independent judgment. All right, so 12 in the blue, we can, is that a cross out or is that one from the original? I think I changed some of that.
I think it was already listed, and then we added that red part.
Yeah, so originally it just read avoid conflicts of interest in the appearance thereof.
Right. So we are going to.
But I think there's greater action in recusing ourselves from board deliberations and votes if appropriate. So I find that to be a good addition.
Good addition. Okay, yes, what is in blue, number 12 on this Google Doc was in BBAB as avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance thereof. So only the addition and recuse ourselves from board deliberation votes if appropriate is the added item, and everybody likes that?
Yeah, and it's and, correct, yep.
All right, great. All right, then we get down to the black, number 12, avoid conflicts of interest. So we do not need that, that item because that is a combination of what we already liked.
Yeah, that can be taken out.
So we can just cross through.
Move to that, yeah.
That item in the black.
Those things below it as well because they were my content, my comments, so.
Okay. All right, so anything with that? Recognize that as an individual board member, I have no authority to speak or act for the board. That's very similar to the one.
It is similar.
And so that one probably, based on our other discussion, that's probably going to just stay that way, correct?
Ma'am, just ask the question here. It says, it says here, recognize individual board member, I have no authority to speak or act publicly or privately for the board unless that indicated that you have that right. In other words, you may, from the boards, well, Bill, we want you to speak on the behalf of the board for this. Otherwise, it would be the chair, correct?
Yeah, no, I like what you're, where you're headed, unless authorized to do so. Just add the words unless authorized to do so.
Exactly.
Okay, so recognize that as an individual board member, I have no authority to speak or act for the board unless authorized to do so. All right, Ms. Bennett, you have that note? Thank you so much for keeping up with this. All right.
And then that highlighted one, we can now take out altogether.
Yes, appropriate, yes.
Right.
All right. The next item, the, here is a possibility of some changes. So originally, this item read, delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and staff, and establish a process for accountability of administrators. So a couple of suggestions there was to say, the board delegates authority.
To the superintendent.
And then to the superintendent.
Nobody else.
Nobody else. And so superintendent, to establish a process or and establish, so I think it sounds better to say to, to establish, although it said and in the original. So we're doing one and or two there?
Two, I think it's the appropriate.
So the board, the board delegates. So the board, the board delegates, cross out the delegate, uh, delegate with the uppercase D. The board delegates authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent to
Establish.
Establish a process for accountability of administrators. Is that what we mean? Does that sound right?
Actually, I don't like the second administrator or the administrators part. Establish a process for accountability.
Yeah, period.
Yeah, I agree.
Establish a process for accountability, period.
Because it's not just for administrators, it's for all the staff, it's for.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right, so. So we're delegating authority for administration of the schools to the superintendent.
To.
Originally it said and establish, but I think that was referring to, again, the superintendent and staff.
So we're delegating authority to the superintendent to create that process. Is that correct? Does that make sense?
Yep, yep.
Ms. Bennett, any questions there on what all that was? Great. All right, the next item, continually improve or improve my ability to serve as a board member by engaging and studying of educational issues and participating in appropriate professional development.
I'm good with the addition of the word continually.
All right.
Take out the, we only need one improve.
Yeah, it is a choice.
All right, excellent. And then it looks like from there, we have not made any changes, is that correct? Does anyone have any other ideas that they thought about? On our behaviors.
I think we got it covered.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we have goals, um, and we have our duties. There's, there's a lot of different lists, but understanding, uh, this code of ethics, I think, is, is really important, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for all that.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a question for clarity. As Ms. Bennett creates the final version of this, is the definition of ethics going to be a part of this policy or we just start with?
No, it's not. That is just this working document.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, any of those, uh, like the words that say numbering is all, certainly cross that out. That was just this working, um, Google Doc, just, um, for everybody to have the same, uh, sharing of ideas.
Thank you.
All right, are we there?
Yeah.
Yes, you did it.
Fantastic, that was awesome. All right, um, so I will entertain a motion regarding the first read of our changes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy BBAB, um, as modified this evening on first reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve on first reading BBAB Code of Ethics for Goochlin County with, uh, the changes that we made today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Excellent, thank you guys. That was some, that was some thinking. So, let me move, that really takes us, uh.
A little way down the road now.
Oh, wow, it does take us down the road. All right, it looks like according to my notes, we are now at number 16 on our agenda.
Action items.
Action items, one-time bonus for employees. So, these are action items, so before we discuss these, I believe we need to have a motion, is that correct?
No, we can discuss.
We can discuss it first?
Individual motions.
All right, well.
Ms. Warren, if I may, just for the benefit of those who are listening online and in our audience tonight, as referenced in the agenda item, uh, we're thankful for the support of the Goochlin County Public, uh, Goochlin County Board of Supervisors who last Tuesday in this room authorized a one-time bonus for their employees in the amount of $1,500 for full-time employees and $700 for part-time employees. As a part of their approval, they also appropriated over $650,000 to our school division with the understanding that we would do the same. And so this is a significant investment, uh, from the supervisors in our workforce and, um, certainly something they did not have to do. But I want to thank them publicly for recognizing the contributions of all county employees who have been working under some most challenging circumstances and specifically our school division employees whom you've seen pictures and videos of. They're just doing amazing things for our students day in and day out. It is my recommendation to you this evening that we use that appropriation to provide a bonus in the same amount as the county. $1,500 for our full-time employees and $700 for.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Seven, yeah, 1,500 and 750, 750 for active part-time school division employees. My, my recommendation also includes $750 for our active long-term and permanent substitutes who have been, been doing the work of our school division since August the 24th, or grateful for their service as well. Uh, pending your approval this evening, we would distribute this bonus on February the 5th in a special payroll that would be distributed to employees who are active on our payroll as of January 31st, 2021. Uh, this bonus is considered a supplemental wage and would be taxed appropriately based on state and federal withholdings. I'm seeking your approval of that this evening.
Wow.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this one-time bonus for employees as presented.
I'll second.
Excellent. All right, so now we can have others discussing that. I knew it had to come after that at some point, but this is just such an exciting item. So I'm, I'm thrilled with this. So, uh, board members, I'm sure everyone has, um, something they would like to add to this action item.
Just well-deserved.
Yeah, well-deserved.
Overdue.
Wish it was more.
Think the county more than.
Yeah, very, very good.
All, all very positive things. And, and, you know, the only thing I would add is that in my mind, our, our staff is priceless.
Exactly.
I have yet to figure out how to put a dollar figure on priceless.
I have, um, a quote that I shared with the board members when I thanked them in, in an email. Next to excellence comes the appreciation of it. So we've definitely seen excellence. We've seen employees who've redesigned their workspace. They've basically reinvented how they do their job. They've learned new skills. They've built in more technology. They've worked across each other, with each other, for each other, uh, in every way possible. They've worked to make sure, like feeding our students, uh, getting them to school safely. There's just been so much that, that has occurred to keep moving. And the thing that impressed me, uh, board members were talking about are visits. When you think about the expression on every face of every employee, it's so, so excited to be there, uh, so loving and so welcoming of everyone in that building. And, and you just see the way that they speak to the children and, and each other. It's just, it is excellent, so, um, I am very, I was very, very excited about the board of supervisors providing this and, uh, certainly, uh, Dr. Rayleigh putting, uh, bringing it to our attention. Yes.
Okay.
All right, board members. Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve this action item for a one-time bonus for our employees. So we are going to vote and, Ms. Bennett, I would like a roll call vote for this action item, please, because it's so important.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes.
Ms. Barefoot Reed?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, board members, on behalf of 468 employees, we thank you and the Board of Supervisors for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our action, uh, item list is Strategic Financial Plan. Dr. Rayleigh did a great job presenting that this evening. Uh, Dr. Rayleigh, do you have any additional comments to add to this?
So this concept was presented to you in October. Uh, you saw it as a draft last month and is now presented for action. It directly aligns with the conversations we had earlier tonight as we build our FY 22 budget and, uh, seeking your approval this evening.
Right. Board members, do I have a motion to approve action item B, Strategic Financial Plan, as presented this evening in our action list?
Still move, and I'll second that.
Excellent. So I have a motion and a second. That means that we can now vote to approve the Strategic Financial Plan, which I might add is going to continue to evolve. So this is great work that's being done. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we have now, um, approved the action item, Strategic Financial Plan. Great, all right. Our next item is Policy Update. I will entertain a motion to approve the policies as presented this evening.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the policy updates listed here for second reading, uh, as a slate, uh, in, which would be inclusive of the changes that we made, modifications we made to BBAB earlier.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the policies for second read, uh, as listed and as changes were made this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations, that was good.
Thank you, that was a big list. Okay, um, item D, again, this is an item really carried for, um, from our organizational meeting, um, selection of representatives on advisory committees.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I, um, I would propose that we maintain the current, uh, representation of board members on the advisory commis, committees that are listed here, really for a couple of reasons. One of which is, this past year has not really provided, uh, what is largely a new board with the opportunities to serve in a normal manner. I mean, there's, there's really been a, quite a few canceled meetings, uh, and that sort of thing. So I, I think it would be good for those purposes for, for everybody to, to stay in the same place. But also, in my experience, uh, serving now in my ninth, almost 10th year on the board, the, the thing that I found really helpful coming along was serving on a committee for a period of time where you just gained an incredible dedication to that. You saw that earlier from me with, with Dr. Wagner, you know, from, from that time was really helped me to understand everything that was needed and, and what was represented. And so I think that, that longevity is something that would serve us under normal circumstance, but I think our current circumstances absolutely dictate that we need to keep the same people. I don't know whether everyone feels the same, but that would be my advice.
Absolutely agree.
That's the way I feel.
I'll second.
So Madam Chair, I move that we, we, uh, maintain the same board representatives on these advisory committees as we had in the 2020 school year.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second, and therefore we can vote for that, um, to keep the board members, um, that the board members keep their committee assignments from 2020 for 2021. And that is quickly Gifted Advisory Committee, Mr. Quarles, School Health Advisory Board, Sandra Barefoot Reed, Advisory Committee for Equity and Education, Karen Horn, CTE Advisory Committee, Sandra Barefoot Reed, Goochlin Education Foundation, Mike Newman, STEM Advisory Committee, William Quarles, and Special Education Advisory Committee, Sandra Barefoot Reed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so our advisory committees have now been approved. All right, uh, our last action item is an adoption of Code of Ethics. So not only is the Code of Ethics a policy, but it is also, again, um, a code that we individually sign. So.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I, uh, move that we adopt the Code of Ethics as we have modified tonight in policy BBAB, those exact words, uh, and that we do so, at least preliminarily this evening, followed up with the corrected document that we may affirm next, next meeting if that's.
To be signed.
Acceptable, yep.
Excellent.
I'll second.
Second, all right. I have a motion and a second to adopt the Code of Ethics as we discuss this evening as policy BBAB. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Fantastic, all right. Dr. Rayleigh, we are back to you.
Thank you, board members. So in your packet for review, you have, uh, the attendance for the month of December and actually you have attendance dating back to August. And you can see that our average attendance for the month of December was 95.91%, which is, uh, highest than it has been, higher than it has been dating back to 2016. So, uh, it's, it's a positive that even under these situ, these circumstances, we have students who are attending and engaged in instruction and so, uh, some, some pretty good numbers there.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Rayleigh. All right, our, um, next item is Committee and Board Reports. Dr. Guyer, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I wondered if maybe you'd go in a different direction. First, I was ready for your, for your presentation. Uh, we had a Reynolds College Board Meeting last week, um, and the only thing I really would share with the, with the board is that Dr. Pando made her appointment of the new Vice President of Academic Affairs. His name is Dr. Darren Campan. Dr. Campan is coming to Reynolds with over 20 years of leadership experience at community college level, most recently in South Carolina. Um, and as you know, the board, board members don't play a role in that hiring, um, just the, the hiring of the president of the college. So that was an appointment by Dr. Pando, but one that she's really excited about and a void that has been in place for a while now. So excited about having that leadership. Um, and then outside of the board meeting, as I mentioned the last time I, I provided an update, Dr. Rayleigh and I had a chance to talk with Dr. Pando recently about, um, the future of the Goochlin campus and really excited to be a part of that conversation. And so Dr. Pando has agreed to participate in our next Business and Education Roundtable coming up in March. March. And a big focus of that agenda will be engaging our business community, our, our business partners in that conversation with Dr. Pando to brainstorm, um, ideas, needs from the business community around that asset in our community. So excited about the potential of that and that includes my update.
Thank you, Dr. Guyer.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Armstrong.
Uh, Safety Committee, we are, I reached out to our consultant for solar, who we have heard from a few times, uh, here in this setting. And I'm going to have her, uh, present some of her findings that we reviewed with her last week to the Safety Committee, uh, probably early February. I'm not getting a date from her now, so I'll, I'll, I'm Mr. Newman, Mr. Quarles, with that date. It should be sometime in the next few weeks.
Excellent, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Teague.
Yes, I am so excited to have so many good things to share with you guys. I'm, I'm trying to be as well-rounded as I can with what I share with you guys, but to start, um, our Bulldog Advisory Committee for Equity and Education, um, has started and they're really, um, moving fast as they are putting out surveys and, um, getting things and making sure, uh, everyone's education is accounted for and changes are being made that are supposed to be made. Um, I wanted to make a comment about our nutritionist and their team and just how much it changes a kid's life for those people to not only say, oh, hi, I hope you're doing well, um, but to go into the community and to be a face. Um, the food is great, uh, it's essential, but to have a face for some of those, from some of our student body has changed a lot of people's perspective. Our student leaders are working up close with Dr. Kuyer, that is so valuable. Um, they are communicating with their class committees individual, um, just to keep things rolling and to make sure everyone's, uh, accounted for. Um, this 9:30 to 2:30 schedule on the high school level, uh, has allowed kids to work, um, and to be and fill in where they need to fill in and it has been one of the biggest blessings and game changers for people of my age group. Drama is working and rolling and there are clubs and things that are gathering and everyone is happy and being able to experience what they need to experience, which is incredible. Um, as well as our sports and our basketball teams, uh, it's been so cool to see families on Instagram and social media be posting like, oh my goodness, my kid's on my TV tonight. Uh, that is super, super neat. And things are growing and moving super quickly and I just thank you guys for your work.
We're gonna have to have him last. That's gonna be hard to beat. Wow, thank you so much, I appreciate your energy too. All right, um, Mr. Newman, you have to follow Mr. Teague.
I, well, I excitedly follow Mr. Teague because having served at the high school all of. Well, I excitedly follow Mr. Teague because having served at the high school, all of that makes me very, very happy. I will share that the Goochlin Education Foundation announced this week their Meet the Challenge creatively, where they are offering each school five grants of one hundred dollars for teachers to apply for and share how they have met the instructional excitement of this year. And that's an exciting opportunity for teachers, and the foundation is certainly pleased for all of their donor support and the opportunity to make this available.
That is really awesome.
They distributed fifty-two one-hundred-dollar grants to our employees. They had twenty-five funded by the foundation. They had a private donor contribute twenty-seven hundred dollars to make sure that every application was approved.
That is fantastic. All right, I'll go last. So, Mr. Wright?
Oh, all right, so.
Don't throw people off.
Yeah, thank you. You were changing it up. That's great. Somebody who's dyed-in-the-wool as I am, it's really hard to change. But no, the, the Maggie Walker School Board did not meet in December, but I think I've shared with you at least various stages of what's happening. An interesting development is that the current chair, I'm the vice chair, the current chair and I met with, via Zoom, with State Superintendent Dr. James Lane and Secretary of Education Carney about the idea of creating a more equitable platform for selection of people who go to governor schools. He used, Secretary Carney had proposed language that was based largely on what they, well, I'll use the word suggested, for Thomas Jefferson School for Science in Fairfax County, and he likewise suggested that we use those same exact criteria for the governor's school. As you can imagine, I wasn't real fond of that. So spoke out and said that there is a distinct difference between a governor's school that is run by one school board that can make a decision internally than from one that is run by fourteen different school boards, and pointed out the differences of a school system like Richmond City, Henrico, or Chesterfield that are sending hundreds of new students each year, and Goochlin that sends seven new students every year. So the idea of how someone would set guidelines was a, a good conversation, and I made him run over five minutes on our meeting, and somebody else suffered for that, and I didn't care. But it was, it was a good conversation, and I told him, I thanked him for, for being the person who was willing to take the first arrow, and I also said that I'm not willing to be the last person to take an arrow on this. And so we're going to continue to go through this. To that end, I've had conversations with the Virginia School Board Association, J.T. Kessler, who is our lobbyist for the association. They have strong concerns about the same things that I did, which is local control and the, the idea of a one-size-fits-all solution for something that is a very squishy at best subject. Nonetheless, there, there is a great deal of commitment for that board to find a solution, although I believe it will be self-developed largely for addressing the idea of equity of, of access to the governor's schools. So that was a long conversation, and I tried not to make it long for you. The other thing that I would mention is that the current chair, Mrs. Ogburn, who's from Henrico County, needs to step away. That's going to push me up into the chair role for this coming year, and I'm excited about that. It's a two-year term on that, so seemingly will be something that will be ahead of me for the next two years. That will put, Dr. Rayly is the head of the Superintendent Steering Committee there, and so I, I did take the time to make sure that that was not going to overburden him given everything else that's going on right now. So we've got, you know, we've got a good team, I think, there. We are, at the moment, lacking for a vice chair nomination, but we've got an entire ten days from now to develop that. But we will be meeting again ten days from now and begin to work on those sorts of things. They, like, like we are, are in the middle of their budget season, although their season ends later than ours. They don't go through everything until May. And so they're at the very beginning stages of their, their budget season, but those documents are beginning to be developed at that level, too. So that's the end of my report.
Wow, a lot of challenging work ahead. All right, Mr. Quarles?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to say that I have nothing new to add. I believe the, the Gift of Program is coming up soon. I don't remember that date right offhand, and STEM have not had a meeting. So there's nothing to report with STEM, but I'll ensure that the next meeting here, I will be prompt and ensure that something is done.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Barefoot Reed?
Special Education Advisory Committee met last night virtually, was attended by three parents, three, and three teachers, and Dr. Fowler and Dr. Wagner. And basically, Dr. Wagner told you everything that we discussed last night, so there's no need to repeat it, but we, it was a good meeting and got a lot of things established, so that, but that's, that's what it was.
Thank you. Dr. Rayly, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing new to report from a committee standpoint, but I will share with our community who's listening and watching that we're actively recruiting professionals for next year. We're in the process of looking at our projected openings and want to recruit the best to be a part of our team. If you know individuals who are looking for joining the best school division around, have them get online and send in an application. We're, want to make sure that we're building a strong team for next year to continue our excellent work.
Thank you, sir. I do have some information from Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. Since our meeting in December, which I reported on last month, Mr. Caraway, the director, sent us some follow-up information. And, and one of the really important items there is that the final application numbers are down, and that there's also, of course, that will affect some of the, the funding, even though there's a statement in his information that says the Department of Ed released a budget calculator for next week that shows a slight increase of approximately two percent and per pupil funding for governor's schools. But again, it's that per pupil funding, so if you have less students, you are going to have less total funds. He also mentioned an online meeting with Secretary Carney. So was Mr. Caraway in with your meeting, sir?
No.
Okay, it was a different meeting, but discussing, because they actually also discussed the admissions process. So really, the state is looking at overall all the academic year governor's schools admission process. So that's going to be work, work that's going to be done there. Dr. Rayly, can you think of anything else on that governor's school issue here with Blue Ridge?
Just internally, board members, typically, we receive about sixty applications for Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. We're down this year at forty-five, and we're, we are in the process of evaluating whether or not we'll be able to support two cohorts for thirty-six. We're going to look at the quality of the applicants and determine the best path forward there. But that's a little bit of a new challenge for us as we head into the spring of the year.
Well, I hope that in your conversations with students and with our counselors' conversations with students, that we can maybe try to figure out why the numbers are down. I'm sure, I'm sure it's very related to the current situation. So I do hope that in the future, those numbers will go back, go back up. The next meeting for our Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board is February third. Advisory Committee for Equity and Education, we did not meet in December, but we look forward to a meeting January twenty-fifth. Also a reminder that the General Assembly convenes tomorrow. So we receive, as board members, lots of information regarding the General Assembly, so your emails should start filling, filling up heavily from J.T. Kessler. My last comment is a quote from, one of my favorite quotes from Dr. King. "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." So happy birthday, Dr. King. I hope that some of our students or staff will be able to, to participate in what's been known as the MLK Junior Day of Service. And so rather than taking the day off, you might find some way to help in your community. And that is all I have for my reports. That brings us to our new business. Board members, is there any new business?
No.
All right, awesome. Seeing no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, move that we adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Move for a second.
All those in favor, you don't really have to vote, but I think tonight we'll say, everybody ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for.